I'm gonna call this meeting to order right now, seven oh three P M. We're gonna start with a call to order Luke Chesek. Luke, I know you're here somewhere. Valerie Woodall.
I'm here.
Jared Stoffes.
Here.
Danielle.
Here.
Luke, you're physically there, we see you now.
I'm here, sorry.
That's fine. So we have full quorum, five zero zero, can you go ahead and Luke lead the pledge allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to item number two, review of the agenda, the mayor and council will review the agenda. So Luke, can you please do a read through of the agendas, vice mayor, please?
One, call to order. Two, review of the agenda. Three, mayor and council member event announcements. Four, presentation by Greenwell Consulting Group LLC on their ninety day legislative update. We're gonna receive a presentation by Yvonne Lanyard and his team on their ninety day legislative update. Five, presentation of the youth scholarship award. Mayor and council present the twenty twenty-three youth scholarship award to seven awards. Six, public comment. Under old business, seven, budget reading and adoption of ordinance, ordinance six, twenty twenty-three, budget amendment number three. Eight, ARPA discussion and vote, mayor and council will vote on the following projects. Street and sidewalk upgrade, one hundred thousand dollars. R D Paratotos year two program extension, thirty-six thousand dollars. Bike co-op, eight thousand dollars. And a new business discussion on a legislative action request to amend some provisions of the state law. That requires publication in a newspaper of general circulation. Our city attorney will talk to us about amending some provisions of the law that requires publication in a newspaper of general circulation. Ten, discussion and vote on the city's Vision Zero Action Plan. Eleven, discussion and vote on partnership with Trachtenberg School of Public Policy. Twelve, discussion and vote on appointing co-chair to the recreation committee. Thirteen, discussion and vote on the letter of support for the Womata Bus Network redesign. Fourteen, discussion and vote on legislative meeting calendar. Fifteen, discussion and vote on council recess for July and August. And then sixteen is the vote on the approval of minutes for the April and May work and legislative sessions. And seventeen is adjournment.
Thank you so much. You did the short version of it, that means I'll have to read it all. Thanks Luke.
No, I think I got it covered, I think I covered them, I just, I did like, I didn't read it word for word, but I got all the meat in there.
Partial credit, partial credit. You get a break is the last official, like the last scheduled legislative meeting of the fiscal year. All right, perfect, so council, is there anything you need to withdraw out of this agenda? Please let us know, give me your thumbs up if you need to be, if you're good with the agenda, if you need to take away an item that you have put in the agenda, let me know as well. All right, so I need to know where you're at, go ahead Valerie.
Selena, I have a hard stop at six fifteen, so if we can move the recreation committee chairs up, that would be helpful.
Six fifteen Colorado time, I assume, because it's seven oh seven over here with, for the.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes, eight fifteen, I'm sorry, eight fifteen your time, yes.
Okay, so council, can we move up the chairs up to the top after the scholarship committee? Yes, we're good? Okay, so if we're all good, I'm hearing consensus, so Melly, can you go ahead and put it after we are wearing the scholarships? So you can move it up, please, that should be a simple vote and go, I don't see like many discussion on it, so it should be a simple go through it. Okay? Thank you Valerie. All right, aside from that change, anything else we see that we wanna take out or move? Okay, if there is none, we have a working agenda with the change of moving the appointment of chair committees. To, to the item right below, can you move up the agenda Melissa? To the item right underneath the scholarship. So moving up to number six, there you go, we'll move it up to ready for public comment, okay? Then we should be fine. All right, so perfect, okay, so moving on to item number three. Mayor and council members events announcement, Valerie, I'm gonna go first with you, and then I'm gonna make my way across, go ahead.
We have pride parade on June seventeenth, and if you want to participate, email the recreation committee at recreationcommittee@mount rainier m d dot O R G. That's my announcement, thank you.
And can you talk about the stencils that have like showed up around the city and the work that you guys have been doing with that, because it's outstanding, please?
Yes, I apologize, yes, so yesterday, the Mount Rainier Elementary School and Joe's Movement Emporium both came out and helped paint storm drain stencils. On the storm drains at thirty-third street and Bunker Hill Road. It was a collaborative effort, the Roots and Shoots helped designed it, and then the Mount Rainier Elementary School students came out, and this will help them next year as they re-certified their green school application. And so, you know, painting storm drains and talking about where water goes and things like that can help your green school application. And so that was a collaborative effort to kind of help start pushing that forward in the next year or so. Exciting as time, go check it out, thirty-third and Bunker Hill, you'll see sharks on skateboards, a megalodon with a baseball eye. Crabs yelling, hail, and something else, I don't know, anyway, that's a snowman in Antarctica, but you wouldn't know.
But thank you also to Roots and Shoots for collaborating in those efforts as well, the beautifying, combining art as well as informational. When it comes to water storm and drainage, so thank you Valerie for leading those efforts, and I'll make this one quickly, the P T O also installed a small library as well. So Valerie, also thank you for your efforts, the P T Os as well in the school for making that happening, continue beautifying and supporting highly the community, so thank you for that as well, so. We're very excited to see that the whole space change and, and it's been a lot of the efforts that you have put along with the P T O, so thank you for that. Okay, all right, so Luke, anything tree that we need to know? Go on.
I don't have anything for the group at this time, thanks.
Signing up volunteers for the Esmond Park.
Oh, I could announce that, yeah. So, sorry, we do have announcements going out, hopefully people will see them soon. Asking for volunteers who want to get involved with organizing. Ways that we can maintain and redesign the landscaping in Rogers Park, which is the park on Eastern Avenue. That is between Bunker Hill and Shepherd Streets. So if anybody's interested in that work, we'll be doing the same model we did for the food forest and just getting a group of folks together to do a design and a maintenance plan, project planted out, bring it back to the mayor and council. See what folks think about it and then go after some grant money or funding, other funding to help make it happen. And so if you're interested, please send us an email, you can send me an email at lchesek@mountrainierm d dot org.
Perfect, thank you Luke, and that information is already on our social media, that's why I also know that that is there, so there we send it out. There's poster information now, so the communications team did a great job, but start advertising that, all right, perfect, Jared.
Yep, just to note that the police review and advisory board is meeting not next Thursday at seven P M. at the police station, and so folks can either attend in person or. Remote information will be posted on the city's calendar to access, so if folks are interested in attending or it's open to the public, and please come on out, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you Jared so much, Danielle.
To piggyback off of that, the cert team is meeting on Monday, December, December, June twenty-sixth at seven thirty at the police station, if you're interested. In either getting information about the community emergency response team or even joining, that would be a great opportunity to come out and listen to some of the things that they're about and ask any questions and maybe join.
All right, thank you, Melissa, can you pull the end of the agenda to it to make sure I don't miss some of them, they already said, but we tried to make sure, one of the things that we did to the agenda couple. I think early in this year has been like write down the agenda, write down some of the events that we cross promote. So we have the youth scholarship award presentation tomorrow, we're gonna be getting together with quite a few of my favorite people all in one room. Then we have the Mount Rainier Elementary School, a school peace parade, which will be taking place this Friday, June nine, from nine to ten. The Juneteenth Family Festival, which is June sixteen, is on Friday, four to eight, and it's gonna be right here in front of like City Hall. Recreation Committee Pride Parade, we announced June seventeen, and the lineup is starting at nine thirty at Thomas Stone. For Juneteenth, June nineteen, the city's administrative office will be closed. Then we have the National Night Out, which is August first from five to eight, and that'll be at the Bunker Hill Fire Department, big shout out to our fire department. Who are always available, not just for the city, but the various community groups. And I also wanna make sure to say a big thank you to the Mount Rainier P T O for caring deeply for this community, not just for the beautification of the school and the surroundings, but also they had a wonderful carnival. This Friday where the cost was zero and it was open to the community to make sure that financial barriers were not a thing. Our, our police department also participated as well as the explorers helping out, so big thank you to the P T O president Tim, but as well as the committee members, Stephanie, as well as Lee. For putting an outstanding team together, the fire department was also there, helping out their committee was also there, and big shout out to Senator Augustine. Valerie Woodall, council member, as well as Mayor Monica Castañas from Comer Manor. P F C and leader of the Youth Explorers and myself, we got Dunk for Education, so all of us took. I dived in the, in the Dunk Pole, as well as the president for the P T O Timers. And making sure that we had a fun, safe space to collaborate, but also showcase our, our support for education. Friday was also safety gun awareness, it was where orange, both board member Pam, Lucy, Strother and myself were orange as well for the event. And also thank you to Delegate Diane Fennell for being there and the Mount Rainier President Jennifer Till and the whole entire staff. For making this happen, I think a lot of times we take for granted that we have various specs of homes in the city of Mount Rainier, but seventy-seven percent of the people living in the city are renters. And majority of the people live here do, do live under a very low income, so thank you for that, and also to the police department for making sure that the streets in front of the schools. Were shut down to make sure that walkability was there and knowing that, you know, we, we worked hard. At making sure that we're a green city and encouraging people to walk, roll and bike a lot, our residents didn't make it in those mediums to the, to that location, so. Saying that, a big thank you to them and early congratulations to our fifth and sixth graders who will be graduating this week. I am very honored to be doing the speech for the commencement class of the fifth graders from Mount Rainier Elementary. So we're very excited to see that, but so big thank you, and also to the city of Brentwood for celebrating their birthday, and we got invited, so. It was really good to also march to see what else our neighbors are doing, and overall, happy pride month, the flag is up on all city hall as well. And we have actually been very supportive of the other cities in our county. In making sure that we stand united when it comes to the representation of our LGBTQI plus community. So you'll see a lot, a lot of flags have gone up already, and some more flags are gonna go up through Route One in our neighboring cities, but it's great to know that we're standing collectively together and Brentwood is having a potluck, they have opened it up for anybody that wants to come over. Barnard Park, if you wanna come over, bring a dish and hang out with, with neighbors with mind like and gray spirit. So that's more or less, because my big thing is the scholarship. Thank you to the scholarship committee, they, they had a hard time because we had a lot of great, wonderful candidates, and today we'll be announcing. Who are the winners of the scholarship committee, so I'm really excited to see that, so I'll leave those announcements for now, and if I remember something at the end, I'll mention it, but I would like to move on with the agenda. All right, thank you guys so much, and great work team, my rainy day was a great success, and it took since November of us planning and making it happen and the parade and everyone else that showed up. Made it wonderful, so thank you community as well. All right, so moving on to the next one, we have a presentation by Greenwell Consulting Group LLC, and they'll be giving us their report, our legislative update on their ninety day. So the presentation will be received from Mr. Ivan, Ivan Lanier and his team, I think I saw Leslie here, maybe Jacob if I'm not mistaken. All right, I see Jacob, I think I see Leslie and maybe even Jonathan around here, okay, oh, see, yeah, I see Jonathan as well, so Greenwell, I'm gonna give you guys the floor. Whoever of you guys would like to speak on, on it, so for some of you guys, you guys know Greenwell Consulting is the consulting groups that consults the city when it comes to legislation, but they're also advocating there to make sure. That we get funding, working with our legislative body, but also making sure we know what else is going on in Annapolis, so. I spent a lot of time in Annapolis during the season, making sure that best interest of Mount Rainier are there, not just for funding, but also when it comes to legislation that potentially could help or hurt us. So Jacob, Jonathan, or Leslie, whichever you guys will have the floor, go ahead.
I'll, I'll go ahead and start mayor first, I want to thank you, thank you council, it's an honor to represent you in Annapolis. Mayor, as you know, it helps when we have activism on behalf of the municipality, right, the legislators, the legislators certainly know who we are. But they wanna know who we represent, they wanna hear from you, we wanna thank you for being a great partner. It was a trying session because of what you'll hear and what you know about the shortfall in the budget, but we were able to overcome some of those things and have some successes. Jacob and Leslie, I think Jacob's still on, he knows that an event he popped out to do this tonight. We'll talk a little about our legislation and then we'll talk about, take any Q and A, so Jacob, if you wanna go from there.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanna say, you know, thanks everyone for the opportunity to have another year in Annapolis with everyone. Leslie's gonna go into kind of the details of the, you know, the grant award we were able to pull off despite what, what Jonathan said there about, you know. Expecting a huge budget surplus this year and the state kind of sliding into a, you know, half, half billion dollar hole essentially in the, in the budget. But the one piece I did wanna point out, you know, one of the big legislative things we worked on this year was the Gateway Development Bill to basically create a neighborhood revitalization plan along Route One corridor. And you know, that, the final language of, of that bill is out, and you know, we wanna make sure that everybody's got a copy before the bill takes effect later this year. But in the meantime, I did want just to let you all know that we are working and talking with the Department of Commerce right now, because they will be involved with the Gateway Development Project there. So we're looking to have the secretary, the new secretary of commerce come into, come into Mount Rainier this summer before everything gets kicked off, and you know, there's a lot of, a lot of good things happening down there. But for now, yeah, thanks again for another year, and I'll let Leslie take it from here.
Good evening, mayor and council, I also would like to thank you for the opportunity to present today and provide a few updates on the initiatives we worked on this session. One of the things that Jacob just mentioned we worked on was securing funding for the Potts Hall project that Mount Rainier has been working on. As you have heard, there were a few challenges with the budget this year, and with the revenue dip, legislators had to make difficult decisions on which projects they would be able to support this session. And with that, we are very happy to report that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was allocated for the Potts Hall project this year. Our team worked diligently to identify and secure funding for this project, and we worked alongside Delegate Fennell, who co-sponsored this L B I request, this legislative bond initiative. And we also worked alongside Delegate Ivy and Senator Augustine, all whom were great allies to the city this session, as we worked to secure this funding under such obstacles that we're being faced. As I mentioned, this funding was allocated in this year's budget, so the funding will be available starting July first. So our team will be here to provide the city with any assistance as you are working to access this funding. We'll also work with the city to provide any facilitation of conversations between the Department of General Services as well as the Board of Public Works. Both who will review this grant and also have to approve it before it can be officially released to you all. So as you are working on this application to submit to them, we will be there along the way to ensure a smooth process. Also, as Jacob discussed, there were a number of bills that we monitored this session, with three thousand bills introduced, our team made sure to monitor each and every single one of them. Because we think it's important for the city to be aware of any bill that could possibly impact you. There were a number of bills that we worked with the city to draft and distribute testimony, and we are very happy to report that of those, quite a few were passed, as I mentioned, only three thousand were introduced, but of those, only eight hundred were enacted. In addition to the Gateway Development Authority Bill, another bill that was passed this session was the Cannabis Reform Bill. This was a very important bill as it had quite a few provisions that would impact local governments. During those last few weeks of the session, there was language that was struck from the bill that would have removed municipalities from the tax revenue distribution. As soon as we were aware of this, we immediately notified the city and worked with the city to develop a letter of opposition for this amendment. We were very happy to also receive a few other letters from municipalities in the area and are very happy to report that language was added back to the bill to include municipalities. The language now states that of the five percent distributed to counties, fifty percent must be distributed to municipalities with, with dispensaries in their municipalities. So we are very happy as this could provide additional funding for the city as these licenses are approved moving forward. And we will be here as well to help the city as this bill is enacted starting on July first. There is one more bill that was passed that I would like to mention that the, the city was in support of, which was House Bill Seventy, the Safe Roads Act. This is another bill that I'm happy to report was passed this session. This bill will require the Maryland Department of Transportation. to implement any safety improvements for new bicycle and pedestrian safety projects that may take more than twelve months. So this is another city that could potentially impact the city and I'm very happy to report again that it was passed. Um, as we are now in the interim, we will continue to support the city with your priorities. And as I mentioned, we will work with you to make sure you can access the funding. And we will also be reaching out soon to schedule a meeting with you to discuss your priorities for the next session. Um, it's very important in these next few months for us to develop a strategy and start scheduling meetings with key members of any agencies and legislators so that they can be aware of our projects before the session begins. Um, so I would like to stop there. I know that there's a lot of information, so I would like to now open it up to the Council for any questions.
Thank you so much, team. And when I say they really work hard, they basically like spend every waking moment in Annapolis, making sure that down to the wire, um, you know, they're advocating for us. And um, the reality is a lot of things were not funded, they were not passed because of like the big cut that that happened. Um, and the fact that we were able to get money and we hold on to it down to the minute, you know, to be approved was much of the effort of like this team making sure that all times they they knew that um we were important, put us out there and talk about our success. But at the same time, the hard work that we put in the city to make sure we held ourselves accountable, to make sure that money is put and utilized the best way possible. So that's been a lot of work um from our team um to make it happen. So Council, I'm gonna open up the floor to you. Jared, go ahead. Uh, you could start.
Thanks. Uh, Leslie and Jonathan, again, thank you so much for all the work you you did this session for us, bringing resources back for the city. Um, it's gonna be critical to, it's critical for a city of our size and our limited resources to be able to rely on state support. So thank you for the work you've done with the legislature, with executive branch, branch agencies in Maryland. And again, great work on both the the cannabis bill, which was really important, get those tweaks and we weren't negatively affected. And also getting the Safe Streets Bill across the line as well. I know there was a lot of, a lot of transportation and pedestrian safety and others bills this session, a number of them didn't get through and I'm glad the the one that really folk makes SHA kind of sit down and better examine how it's um, how it's proceeding with pedestrian and bike safety on its projects is critical. Because a lot of our streets, as you probably know, Route One and Queens Chapel Road are outside of city control within SHA. You know, I know we'll talk more about priorities later. I just wanted to mention, because we're talking about street safety later tonight, there was a couple bills that we had hoped would pass. Most important one for us, a big one for us was um, the ability to um have traffic control devices or cameras at places other than uh including at stop signs, which is not currently legal in the county. Uh, sorry, in Maryland. Um, because right now we, you know, we have roughly one or two signalized intersections at about eighty stop sign ones that we are unable to utilize any sort of automated enforcement on. So um, so that's something I'd like to, you know, hopefully in next session, we can, that didn't pass this round, but would love to make sure we advocate strongly for it um next session. Uh, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
I thought you were gonna go into the SS4A. What's going on, Jared? You're slagging right there as our two-point people, right? All right, Luke, I'll let you go next.
Cool. Um, well, thank you on behalf of everyone in Mount Rainier for the work you've done. That funding for Potts Hall is just, we we need it because that project costs a lot of money and us getting that funding allows us to do a lot of the other stuff that we're gonna talk about tonight when it comes to streets and sidewalks. So very important. Just a question, what's the outlook for next year? Do we expect there to be budget surplus? Do we expect there to be a lot of opportunity for us at the state level? Or is it gonna be a little bit tighter because of sort of inflationary costs on government spending going into next year?
I think, I think the latter of what you just said, uh, everyone's bracing for this economy and what it, what is it going to do? Um, so what we're hearing is that, uh, don't expect rainy day usage of any, any funds. Um, but you know, again, we'll keep our our fingers on the pulse and continue to communicate. But I think from what we're hearing from the, in fact, I just saw the Madam Speaker earlier this evening. We should expect that things will be tight.
Okay.
That's, that's just what we're hearing.
Okay.
And and I think that's all across the board, you know, uh, the economy, everybody's just, just uh being real cautious, right?
Yeah. And then is there any um outlook for, from the federal level at some of a push for, for lobbying on the federal scene for some money uh from our senators or representatives for Potts Hall?
Yeah, so we wanted to talk about that because I'd like to maybe sit down. Um, we create a work group to talk about federal pursuits. Um, again, we have those relationships. I think we need to be specific in what we go after. So maybe we, we, we reconvene Mayor and and Council uh and and talk about what specific, um, you know, pots of money we want to go after. Because again, that is a resource that we can tap into.
Excellent. All right, we'll look forward to scheduling those and thank you both.
All right, perfect, Valerie.
Um, thank you. Um, and thank you for all your work that you've been doing. I don't have any questions right now. I think I look forward to seeing you soon. At some point, we can talk through more of some of the things that I'd like to work on going forward. But right now, I will save my time, so thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Danielle?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'm new here, so um, I'm I'm looking forward to getting to know all of you. And um, I really didn't even know you existed, so I was very excited to know we have our own little lobby group. So um, I can't wait to uh talk to you and see what kind of good things we may have coming down the pipe. Um, and thank you for everything you did. I want to echo um what Luke said about securing the money for us for Potts Hall. It's a huge project that we've been looking at for numerous years, so it's really good to see it actually starting to um be realized and I'm looking forward to finding more money down the road to uh continue to make sure that that is finished properly and on a good time scale. Um, and definitely the uh the cannabis reform, um, securing that money for the municipalities that can come in handy. We, we've seen how it's benefited many cities and states around the nation. And um, I'm glad to know that municipalities in Maryland will be able to get a piece of that pot. So thank you guys very much.
So, I mean, I spent a lot of time talking and working with you guys, so there's nothing you guys haven't heard. And endless thank yous and the endless calls and the endless like running to the hallways to like address fires, right? We, we, we're a great team. And um, like I told you guys, you know, even as much work as I do, like the fact that you guys are day, day in, day out, like sunrise to sunset, making sure like, you know, to speak to the right people, it definitely has helped. Not just this year, but also last year to be able to provide the initial seating for Potts Hall. Um, so this project alone, the last two years has received quite a bit of funding that we haven't seen in in a long time. So I definitely want to make sure to give you kudos, not just for this year, but also for last year. And um, for the workstation, we are gonna be talking about some of the priorities, right? Uh, one of these that we are gonna go after right now is the SS4A. So we're working on letters of recommendation and support for that. So I'll pass that information to you guys, so that way you guys go also help us and figure out what are the letters we need and if you guys could facilitate help with that, it definitely will come in handy. Um, we have reached out to some of our representatives already, we're moving along, but I want to make sure you guys are involved in this because as we continue working in those efforts of a multi-year funding, you're aware was looking out and you guys are our best spokespersons and sometimes that allows for leverage to happen for people to know that we're very serious about certain things and why is it that other things are also important. But also when it comes to um going after further funding, I did had um a brief conversation with one of the senators' office yesterday. And um, if you know, it sounds like, you know, we might be looking at earmarks to be able to go after somebody for Potts Hall because I'm hearing the same thing you guys are hearing when it comes like, it's gonna be tight, tight, tight. Um, and at the same time, um, there's gonna be a lot of things that this year, we had a lot of new new people, right? So that's also why some of the bills were everywhere. They had to be nicely fine tuned, uh, but it was a big learning curve. Uh, but definitely, like I told you, my, my point also to the councils, like to get our legislation priorities done this June, so that way you guys get to work during the whole summer because decisions are being done um already, like for us to wait until September starting too late because work has already been happening. I did have a brief conversation with Delegate Fennell. Uh, so she's ready to hear what we're, um, what we want to know, so that way she hears as early as we possibly can talk to her about it. But once again, even the little, the the pot that they have to be able to help, not just their municipalities, because it's a give and take, is there, but yeah, we were definitely told that it's gonna be tight. So we need to make sure that we are very specific for what we're gonna go for and and um, and and show that we're ready to like get it done like right away as well. That helps instead of them feeling like somebody's gonna be sitting around and nothing's happening because that's been some of the concern that some of the legislations had, that they award money and it sits there forever. And at the point they're like, we could have just given it to somebody else, they could put it to use and they could come back a different year. So they're gonna be even more strict when it comes to that. They want things that they're ready to go in a plan to exercise and follow through. So that's something to, you know, not just, you know, I'm sure you guys know, you, you, Jonathan, you, Jacob and Leslie pulling up, but also make sure that it's also in the forefront of our team. Um, as we like go and figure out what we're gonna aim at, the one or two projects that we might look, then if it's Potts Hall, it's like, this is what it looks like and we need to move forward with it. We don't have much time to sit around and and debate it for hours. Um, so that's something that you guys do need to be aware. Those conversations are happening, so being summons right and left um about like, what do we see? Because with everything being tight, people want to make sure they're ahead and having those conversations right now that um quote unquote, they're out of session. But the reality is like they continue working, our, our team has been very, um, very supportive. They brought money for uh most, most municipalities, but it's been a lot of um hard work and effort. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to see if anybody from the community has any questions specifically to them. Um, let me see, I have a Thomas DeRulo, you like to make a public comment. Do you want to um talk about public comment about this specifically, Thomas? Thomas? So I'm gonna move into public comments. I don't see everything, everybody else for public comments, so that's gonna be after, all right. So.
I have a public comment.
Megan, uh, is it about this specifically or does it fall under public comment?
I think this falls under pub- can you hear me?
No, there's two differences. So public comment is for things that are not on the agenda, so that's number seven on the agenda? Or is it about this specific subject?
It's about something that is not on the agenda.
So it'll be number seven, so not yet. So this is for uh the presentation that we just heard, okay? So give me a few minutes and I'll, I'll call you up. So put it in the chat, because right now I have, I have Thomas and I have Sam. So if you could put name, last name blocked and then put right there, public comment, I'll call you for public comments, you'll be the third in the list, okay? Thank you, Megan. All right, perfect, all right. So Jonathan, Jacob and Leslie, as well as Ivan, who I'm sure is also like listening to us, like, you know, and following through with everything. He's like on top of everything. Thank you guys so much. We're gonna let you guys go and continue working for us and we appreciate every effort. Um, so I'm gonna ask you guys to probably join us for our meeting uh for the work session that's coming up, or if not, we'll go ahead and um pass you guys the notes of what it looks like, where, where we want you guys to like push extra and what money we want to go after, okay? And if you see anything, obviously you guys know Potts Hall is a big priority for us, right? Uh, trying to get that funding as much as it is. But we're gonna have to uh talk strategy and I know Mr. Kamali and I do, um, during the season, we do have meetings with you guys. Um, or at least we try to like, you know, um, so that we will figure out to have a conversation as well to figure out what, what it looks like when it comes to other plans. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Perfect, have a good night. Thank you guys so much, okay?
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
We'll see you around Annapolis. All right, perfect. So moving on to item number five, we have presentation, the Youth Scholarship Award. Yay, my favorite, one of my favorite things. So the Maryland Council presented twenty twenty-two Youth Scholarship Awards to eleven awardees. That is not a mistake. And I'll break it down on why is this. So first of all, I want to give a big, big thank you to our Scholarship Committee um for their great efforts. They had very, very tough calls. And um, to the students that got awarded, they have kept this under lock and key. And this is the first time publicly we're announcing who the winners are, so we're gonna read their names. From the ARPA funds, the three thousand dollars per awardees scholarships, we have Anthony Romero Gonzalez, Montana Norman, Amir Reen, Osman Milla, Mario Carter de la Rosa, Maximo Valle, Sonia Villatoro Ramos, and from the FY twenty-three budget, that's a thousand dollars per awardee. Uh, that is Amaris Reddick, Monica Chicas, uh, Rika Engwery and Caitlin Novoa. So I'm pretty sure I saw the committee here, so let me see. Who's here from the committee? Da, 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 where are you? Is anybody here from the committee, from the Scholarship Committee? Nope, okay, so I'll tell you who they are. We saw every year, we um, we more or less like put a group together. This has been an outstanding group. Uh, we do have Jasmine White, uh, David Epley, we have uh Sierra Simone. Uh, put the names up, Melissa. Uh, we also, if you have them, we also have Joe Mary. Um, and we have Hennessy's from Mary, that is not only um part of the Scholarship Committee, but she was one of the first awardees of the scholarship. So this is our fifth year, hard to believe, right, Luke? How we started and um, and where we're at. So this is the most cautious we have given in one year and we have very fortunate that we have ARPA to be able to subsidize most of the scholarships plus the additional. In behalf of the committee, my role at Melissa's Rose basically put the appointments together, get the applications and be there in case they need us in any way. The committee um interviews us, the questions and decides who they are. So they took a unanimous vote, um, five zero zero, and this is the awardees they selected. So thank you guys so much. So we do have a few of the kids here, um, young adults, young adults. Uh, that they range for like high school graduates to some of them like going to college as well. So um, if any of you guys would like to speak, you guys have the floor, you guys could speak and say something. So I do see Amaris, Amaris, the floor is yours, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I would like to thank everybody for the opportunity. Of course, this is my second scholarship from Mount Rainier, so I'm very hap- happy and thankful and grateful, all of it. Everything that you could think of, I'm all of it right now.
I'm really happy to see that. These are, I mean, they're, they're outstanding kids. Let me see who else I see here. Um, I do see Anthony Romero, Anthony, the floor is yours, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off what she said, you know, I really appreciate this opportunity to help me fund, you know, my my like educational career and to help me further on uh my journey and my mission to where I want to go. So thank you, I really appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you so much, Anthony. I do see Maximo Valle, uh, hello, Maximo, the floor is yours.
I'd just like to say thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. It was um, it was really nice and it means a lot to be able to be awarded three thousand and to continue on with my studies uh in Morgan State.
Perfect, and uh Maximo is actually, he graduated from Marinier Elementary and Northwestern as well. Uh, we have uh Rika, go ahead, the first yours, Rika.
Oh, yes, I want to thank everybody so much for giving me this blessing. I grew up here, I even went to school here as well, elementary school. So I find it really rewarding to have this happening, so thank you.
Perfect, Montana, go ahead. You guys can turn on your, your cameras, you guys are all shy now. We know who you guys are. All right, go ahead, Montana.
Yeah, so just thank you so much. Really grateful for the opportunity to have this scholarship. Marinier is a very special place to me, really close to my heart. Um, means a lot to grow up and be raised in a city like Mount Rainier, so I'm really thankful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Montana. Mario, the first yours.
Hi, um, yeah, I, it's uh means a lot to me to have the vote of confidence of my, my town behind me. Um, and it's really helpful uh to get through college, so it just, it means a lot.
Perfect, and I see, let me see, who else do I have here? Um, who else is here from the scholarship? I think Sonia, you're here, go ahead, the, the floor is yours as well.
Um, I just want to say that I'm really grateful for this opportunity, which will help me continue in my journey in graduate school and it's been a journey as a first generation. So I'm like really grateful for this opportunity and I hope that once I graduate, I'm able to serve the like really grateful for this opportunity. And I hope that once I graduate, I'm able to serve the community with mental health awareness.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, Caitlin, I think I saw you here as well. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate and consider the fact that you took interest in me and awarded me this award. I have been part of this talent for so many years and I feel really appreciated to like get recognition with this award. So I really wanna thank you for the opportunity.
Perfect. And I think I saw Osman here. I'm not sure if he's still here, cause some of the kids have to run between work and, and school. Um, Osman, are you still here? I think Osman is not here, but he was here earlier. And I think Monica, you already had a chance to, uh, speak or no?
Um, no, not yet.
Go ahead, Monica.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity also. Um, yeah, I am very grateful. College is very expensive. So to be able to get awarded, it's really nice. And this is actually my first time applying to the scholarship. Yeah, thank you.
You, you're welcome. So, um, I think, let me see, I think I got everybody. Did I miss anybody? I mean, the, the group is a lot bigger now. So I have more, uh, young adults. Young adults, we're gonna be on it. So, um, on behalf of the mayor and council, we are gonna take the ball like we to make sure we, um, officially, uh, move forward, um, with the funding, right? Tomorrow, you guys are gonna be receiving the, the paper check. I make sure, uh, the team, finance, Natalie, Melissa, uh, Mr. Kamali, we all make sure that those checks were, uh, ready and cut, they've been signed. And so they are ready to go. Uh, so tomorrow I'll see you guys in order to worry guys the funding. Um, and I wanna say that, you know, we are very, very, um, happy to have you guys as part of our, like, you know, educational ambassadors. Some of them are going into college. Some of them are going to their BA. Some of them were going to our masters. We do have one of them that I think she did, um, you know, that was going to her doctor's degree. So in five years, we have done a lot. We have gotten quite a few people graduates. So we're gonna like, uh, meet up tomorrow. And make sure that, uh, they, as many of the ones that we can get together for them to get to know each other, because the idea of how this scholarship was, was created, you know? My vision was mainly to have education ambassadors, but for the city to stand behind them. Whenever they have needed something, they reach out and we've sent an email blast saying, we need help with this. Can somebody in the community help us? And the community has been very positive. I've been able to find people to interview. Either they live here in the city or they know somebody, um, within their job that's able to get this across. But also making sure that the next generation knows that we are supporting education. And this is important to us. I'll be touching bases with you guys twice during the year to see how you guys are doing and everything is fine. Right? And, um, we look forward to, um, another great funding. So council, um, I'm gonna pass the mic to you guys if you guys wanna say something. Um, and then how do you call it? Um, and then we'll go ahead and take an official vote. Okay? Uh, Jer, I saw your mic open. Go ahead.
Yes, just wanted to say congratulations. Uh, you know, thanks so much for, um, you know, not only being here in our community, but for, um, applying to the program. I mean, we're here, we are here, mayor and council. We're here to represent the entire city. Uh, we're here to, and we're, and we're really excited to be able to extend support to you, uh, for this year. So I just wanted to say, um, thank you and um, you know, Luke always say, always says this too, but, uh, you know, we're, we're here as you go on, uh, through your educational pathways, whether it be in community college, college, masters, or other, other types of programs. And please, uh, you know, reach out, reach out to the city, uh, mayor and council. We can uh, connect you to folks, um, different oper- hopefully different opportunities, uh, as you move forward. Um, if in your, uh, in your educational pathway and in your career. So congratulations again.
Perfect. So much. We're gonna go Valerie. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, we're really proud of you. Um, and we look forward to seeing all the good you'll do in the future. So keep going. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Luke, go ahead.
Yeah, this is always one of my favorite times of the year. Um, just so proud of the work all you guys are doing, um, and so happy that we're able to help you in, in this small way. Um, and just to echo what everybody said, um, about, um, keeping in contact with us, you know, networking is, is, is how you get jobs today. Um, everybody wants the, the cool jobs, um, and there's only so many of them to get. Um, so no matter what you're interested in, between the five of us, um, you know, we know a lot of people in this city. And those people probably work in some industry you wanna work in or know somebody in an industry you wanna work in. Um, and that's a big, um, key into finding jobs. Um, it's not that the person who you'll get connected with will like hand you a job. It's a little bit more subtle than that, but they might say, oh yeah, you're interested in that. Well, I know this person who knows about when jobs are posted there. And then you'll, you'll get introduced to them. And so you sort of have these like, you end up meeting like six different people through one connection. And maybe three of those six are able to tell you about when to know of a job opening and who to talk to. Um, and you may not get the first job, but you might get the second or third. Um, and so that's just the networking circuit and that's kind of the hustle, um, in, in modern day, uh, sort of job hunting that we have to go through. And we're here to help you with that, um, if you need it. Cause when you're, when you're younger, that can be a little bit daunting. Um, but, um, we've gone through it and can, can help you if you need it. And so just, uh, don't hesitate to reach out to, to us at council@mountreiniermd.org. And so excited to see all the good work that you're gonna do in the years ahead. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Luke. Uh, Danielle?
Yes, um, this is the first time I've gotten to, uh, witness this, uh, this award. I've heard about it for years and, um, um, so I'm really excited to be a part of it this year. I love hearing, um, so many voices going, I grew up here. I went to Mount Rainier Elementary. And now you're, you're in college and you're going for masters and even one doctorate. I mean, your city is so proud of you and, um, I'm proud of you. I'm proud of all the kids going to college, but I am so proud of each and every one of you guys, um, for applying and winning a scholarship. And just remember, I mean, I can keep saying the same thing that all the other guys have already said, but to tack on top of that, don't forget your community. We are still here for you. Um, even on just a community basis. And when you, when you get those great jobs, you know, come back and, um, share some of that with their, some of your talents with the community. We'd love to see you. Thank you and congratulations again.
All right. Um, I'll tell you the same thing I, I tell you guys and I tell the whole entire classes every year. Um, you have, uh, 9,000 of us standing behind you, cheering you on, supporting you. That's the biggest network that you, uh, somebody potentially could have. So they've been, if you're a first generation going to college, you have now a whole entire, uh, city behind you, supporting and looking out for you. So, um, you're not alone over there. And we'll be there every step of the way. You guys, um, tomorrow, you guys get my direct contact and, you know, I, 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 a lot of the work that I also do is counseling, right? A lot of the great work for many years of education I've been on, right? But it also allows for you guys to know that we're here. And like I said, like reach out, I'll connect you with, um, with anybody that we can get. We know enough people and, um, I was, um, I'm always happy to see that plenty of you guys that also, uh, have volunteered in the community. Will continue to volunteer in the community. Some of you guys are eager to start volunteering on it. So we'll connect you as well with the various, uh, volunteer opportunities in the city to make sure that you continue staying connected and you guys are now role models for the next generation. So because it's something I love, I like to motion, um, to, um, to, uh, fund, um, the stu- the following students with $3,000 scholarship from the ARPA funds. Anthony Romero Gonzalez, Montana Norman, Amir Regina, Osman Milla, Mario Carter de la Rosa, Maximo Valle, and Sonia Villatoro Ramos. And from the FY23 budget, a thousand dollar per award for Amaris Reddick, uh, Monica Chicas, Rica Enguery and Caitlin Nova. I have a motion in the floor. Can I have a second? It's probably moved in second. Um, any discussion? Objection, abstention, hearing none. This item has been formally approved and voted unanimously. So thank you guys so much. And, um, I'll see you guys tomorrow. And I wanna make sure I give a big thank you to your families who have gotten you guys here and know that, you know, they love you and they're supporting you. And we're looking forward to seeing them tomorrow, right? So, um, have a great night. You're welcome to stay, you know, like I told you guys, we have a lot of meetings and please go ahead and get involved. So thank you guys so much. All right. I'll see you tomorrow as well. And I look forward to, um, to, to, um, add into our, our tradition that we have every year. All right. And a big thank you also to Ms. Melissa Sam, our clerk, who makes sure to schedule the appointments, the applications get reviewed. That puts up with me and my secret question until the last minute, and she holds it dear to her heart. And, uh, make sure that, um, that everything follows through and we have a great event. So Melissa, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you do for it. And, um, it's, it's been a lot of work and effort to get us here. And a lot of it has to do with integrity, to make sure that we save, keep the information and make sure that we provide, um, a lot of great, um, a great time for both the committee as well as the student and the, the committee. You guys were outstanding. I think this is one of the best committees that we had. And we look forward to you guys, you know, working alongside with us, um, uh, next year, you know, so we're very excited about that. And, um, we look forward to you guys. I'm gonna be working my whole summer to figure out what the key question is, uh, for the scholarship committee. Um, and we've usually put it out by December. So we have like, we have not fine tuned it. So thank you Melissa as well in the committee for that. In order to make sure it happens. So kids, families, I, I know I keep calling you kids, but I told you guys, I, I gave you my disclaimer. You guys are always gonna be kids for me, right? Young adults, um, congratulations and I'll see you tomorrow. Okay? So take care and, um, plenty, plenty of love for everybody. All right. So bye. All right, Valerie, we're trying to get you out of here. We promise. Okay? All right. So moving on to the next item, discussion and vote on appointment co-chairs to recreation committee. And, oh, I didn't see it in this version, but that'll be, um, Valerie, go ahead. I'll see you the floor for this one.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the youth scholarship committee is great and so is the recreation committee. Um, and we are, um, obviously Daniel is on council now. And so we have two new leaders stepping into the role, um, as co-chairs, Stephanie Schlesinger and Bob Vanderbilt. Um, they've both been on the recreation committee. I think Bob has been there about seven months, eight months, two months. And, um, Stephanie's been there for.
Two years.
Two, two years. Two years. So, um, and then, um, and then Stephanie's been there for a couple of years as well. So they have been doing a lot of great work. Um, they put on the, uh, the first 5K, the second 5K in Mount Rainier. Um, they, um, helped with the yard sale and they also, um, they're working on the pride parade coming up. So I'm eager to appoint them. Um, I don't think they're on the line right now, but that's okay. Um, they're busy people with, um, families and everything. So, um, yeah.
Do me a favor, Valerie, in order to expedite this, can you put a motion on the floor and we're open into discussion so that we can move, move with the process a little bit, um, faster?
Yeah, I moved to, um, appoint, um, Stephanie Schlesinger and Bob Vanderbilt to the recreation.
As co-chairs?
As co-chairs, yes.
All right. There's a motion on the floor.
I second.
With that, go ahead and second it. All right. Open it up to discussion. So, um, guys, if you have no discussion, move through it so that we could go for a vote. Okay? Because I need to make sure, um, that we get Valerie out on time and, and utilize as much time as she has. All right. So I'm gonna go around. Danielle, you're gonna be first, followed by Luke, followed by Jared. Go ahead.
Um, I'm very proud of Bob and Stephanie, and I'm very excited, um, for them to co-chair and can't wait to see all the amazing things that they do with the recreation committee. Um, a little shout out to Bob. It's his anniversary today. That's why he's not here with us. So happy anniversary, Bob. Um, what a wonderful little gift from the city to Bob for his anniversary. And Stephanie is, uh, out of town right now. So, um, when she comes back into town, I know she'll be thrilled to hear that this. So, okay, thank you.
All right, Luke, go ahead and Jared.
No, just appreciate, uh, folks stepping forward to take leadership roles on the recreation committee and any of our city committees. Um, we are really lucky in this city to have so many people who give free labor to the city to make sure programming on so many fronts, uh, moves forward. So just appreciate the work you do and happy for your, uh, stepping up.
Thank you so much, Jared.
Yep. Just wanted to say to Bob and Stephanie, if you're watching this later, thank you so much for stepping up for your leadership and, uh, we're really lucky. We're such a small city, limited resources, but so many folks have come out and stepped up to, uh, join committees. So, uh, any folks that are attending this meeting right now or watching this later, um, you know, please, uh, you know, we can't function without you. Please, um, come out, volunteer for the recreation committee, uh, other committees. Um, it's, uh, it'll, even this small, uh, small bits and small contributions make a big difference. So, uh, thank you again.
Thank you so much. Um, so I'll make this very short. Um, we love Stephanie and Bob. They're great people. They've done great events. They love the community. They're, uh, very kind-hearted and selfless. Um, I know Bob for a lot longer time, him and, uh, Mario forever and a day, right? Could be basically my number ones, right? But, um, they're, they're very kind and, and, um, this is important. So, um, full support for them. The other thing, um, if anybody would like to join the red committee, uh, Valerie did put the information right there, uh, recreation committee at mountreiniermd.org. But you also could like contact Valerie directly, you know, uh, be would of, uh, mountreiniermd.org as well. Um, she spends a lot of time around, uh, walking and working in the community. So reach out to them. So that way we're, we're able to do it. And we're trying to get a whole entire, um, slate of people to join also the committee and we'll be appointing them by September. But in the meantime, you guys who work on the activities that are coming up, but, um, a lot of our work going. So in doing that, there is a motion in the floor. Um, any objection? Abstentions, hearing none. Uh, Stephanie and Bob, you have officially been appointed to co-chairs of the red committee. Thank you guys so much. All right, Valerie, see, we did this. Yay. Um, all right. So now we're gonna open it up to public, uh, comment. Valerie, do me a favor. Uh, Melissa will send the official like, uh, document saying like you've been appointed, but can you please reach out to both of them to let them know they're officially being appointed? Um, so, you know, and so that way they are aware as well. Cause you guys have, you have, you'll continue to work. It's not like, okay, perfect. So now we're gonna open it up to item number seven, public comment. This is the time where the members of the public get to comment on items that ideally not on the agenda. Or they can wait to tell us about, um, their thoughts. And they cannot wait to stay later on in the agenda, right? So if the item is in the agenda, we ask that you please weigh into the agenda items call so that we could give us your feedback. Um, but if you choose to do it here, it's great as well. You do have three minutes of, um, uninterrupted time to like say your piece. And, uh, if you are representing a group, you need to let us know. That's the group you represent. Usually we ask you guys, let us know ahead of time. So, and if members of your group are here, they seat their time. That means like if you're representing as an example, the red committee, right? You're speaking on behalf of them and you take the five minutes, um, that that seals the faith of the other red committee members, uh, and you have the seating for a few sides to do the five minutes. In saying that, uh, we asked if you're in the chat, pre-name, last name, um, street and block number, uh, where you're at and make sure you introduce yourself when you go, um, when you speak. If you're on Facebook, make your comment. And also if you happen to be on the phone, let me know. I'll do a call, uh, basically says anybody in the phone that would like to speak. Uh, we've had a couple of people that speak on the phone that have not been able to tap into chat. Uh, you're thinking if you have a quick comment that you just wanna say, just to read, if you don't wanna talk, we could do a quick read through. Um, but once again, observing that I'm not gonna be able to read like, you know, a big paragraph of it is something basic. And also once again, you guys could post the questions. That means we have all the answers. We just are here to hear more or less and we could either answer or wait to answer at different times if we need more information. All right. So, uh, we have at least three people that I saw on the list. So oof, hold on. I'm trying to go back. Cause some people sign up really early. Um, okay. So I have first in the list, uh, Thomas DeRulo for 4200 block of 31st Street. Uh, Thomas, uh, the floor is yours.
Um, actually I know that Megan Nordrup has signed up as well and she had, she's on the time schedule. Can she go first, please?
So I'm gonna have to go next to Sam. So I'm going in order, cause then I get accused of having patriotism. All right. Uh, Sam McCormley, uh, from 4200 block of 31st Street. And you guys are the same house, all right? Sam, are you sitting your time to, uh, to make?
Yeah, I can, uh, I, I'm happy to comment now. I'll be, I'll be very brief. Um.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Sam.
All right. Um, I'm, I wanted to, uh, just make a brief comment, um, about the Vision Zero effort. And, um, I should also say I'm attempting to put my two children to sleep right now. So, uh, there may be some interruptions. Um, but I wanted to say that I think that, um, I had a chance to look over the proposals and I think they're very worthy and they address a lot of key issues. And I really wanna, uh, applaud the, um, this, the parts of the study that give special attention to areas that are particularly crash prone, like Chelmsford Road and Arundel. And in general, I just really like the vision of the plan, um, about creating, um, uh, shared spaces that the community can use on our streets and sidewalks. And I really love this is a neighborhood where kids are riding their bikes on the street and people are visiting with each other on the sidewalks. And I think that, um, that's only possible if our streets are safe. And so I really like that about the effort. At the same time, I, I also wanted to register a concern, which is that a group of me and my neighbors have been raising concerns about, uh, the safety of our street, um, 31st Street. about the safety of our street, 31st Street, just north of Taylor Street. On where there's been just a lot of speeding, a lot of reckless running of stop signs. And we've been advocating for some improvements, even temporary ones, to help slow the speed of traffic. And we've been disappointed that there haven't been able to have been interventions done more quickly. Especially given just the urgency of that issue and the safety of the kids on the block. So I would just ask the Mount Rainier City Government and the City Council to, to look into ways to go beyond these longer range planning efforts and see what you can do tactically on a short-term basis to help address safety issues that are really important to the residents. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much. Thomas, I'll call you after Megan, okay? I apologize if the word I utilized was sitting your, I think what I was trying to say more specific is that you let her go, you will let, you will like-
Yes.
Put her up in the list. Well, you know what I mean. Alright, we're on the same page. Alright Megan, 4200 block of 31st Street. So let me tell you guys, we are gonna be talking about SS4 for all and the agenda. So this is technically an item, but go ahead, you guys can speak now. Go on.
Megan, the first one. Hi everybody, can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Glad to be with you guys. Thank you for being our city government. It's, it's nice to come to a meeting and see what you guys are doing. I've lived in this neighborhood for 15 years and I have a kindergartner in my house who is also going to bed at the same time, so that's why I have changed locations here. I, I wanna echo some of Sam's sentiments. I, I don't have comments per se on the travels, the traffic study. But I was part of the group of neighbors here on the 4200 block of 31st Street who made a petition for traffic calming devices. Because as I understand how the city government works, that's the way you're supposed to request things. So we made a petition during COVID. I went door to door to a lot of houses, met a lot of great people. And got a lot of support for some traffic calming on this block and on Taylor Street, the intersection of 31st and Taylor. And our initial petition, which was submitted in 2022, got lost by the city government. So we were asked to resubmit it so that we could demonstrate to the city that we were really interested in having some attention paid to our area. So we, I went around and with the help of my neighbors, we gathered all those signatures again and submitted them in the fall of 2022. And at that point, we were said, we were told we should wait for the traffic study. Now the traffic study is out. I'm very disappointed that there wasn't any temporary measure made or any acknowledgement from the people who are supposed to be representing. I'm in Ward 2, I'm 31st is kind of the boundary, so I'm on the Ward 2 side. We did hear from Luke and, but I have not heard from my representatives, Ward 2 Jared and Valerie on the topic. And I was really hoping to get some support to get these measures put in place sooner and not wait. The kids are not waiting to go out and play and I would love it if this way that we've been told is the way that we should interact with our city government was actually a little more functional, a little more communicative. Cause I feel very frustrated, as you can hear, I'm a little emotional about it. But I thank you very much.
Thank you Megan and we'll, we'll work with, we'll work with you. I'm sure Valerie, Jared and myself will reach out, okay? Not together, but in separate occasions. Thank you Megan so much. And we're, we're listening and we're trying to balance it a little bit and we'll be, we'll be in communication with you, okay? I know they're working through it as well, okay? Alright, it's, it's, okay, so Thomas, you're, you're up next.
Hello, I also live on the 4200 block of 31st Street and I want to add what Megan and Sam just commented on. And I'll start with an opening sentence of the Maryland Strategic Highway Safety Plan. And it goes, because traffic crashes are predictable and preventable events, any fatality or severe injury on the roads is unacceptable, right? And so I also live on the corner of 31st and Upsher. I regularly see cars speeding through our block on 31st Street. They go way above the 25 miles per hour. Just like Megan, I'm a parent, I have two young children, they frequently walk around. For instance, they walk to the food forest on 31st Street and so I have a lot of concern about their safety. Especially combining the speeding with a blind hill at the top of our block. Like I can easily foresee accidents happening involving children trying to get to the food forest or try to get from the food forest back home. That particular stretch is actually just a calamity waiting to happen. As evidenced by the average of one crash per 10 residents is listed in the recently published traffic report. And so to come back to my opening sentence, traffic crashes are predictable and as residents who live on that block and we see the traffic on a daily basis, we are predicting them, right? Residents, as Megan said, have been very vocal requesting parties for traffic calming devices on our block for a good time so far, but nothing has happened and there's been really no meaningful movement there. Instead, we've been told repeatedly, there is a traffic study and we should await the results thereof. Well, the results are now available. And so I'm requesting to know what concrete actions will be undertaken to put traffic calming devices on the 4200 block of 31st Street, which type and on what timeline? There have been multiple efforts by residents making clear requests. Megan mentioned this, for traffic calming devices over the last couple of years. So the demand from constituents is actually, it's there, right? It's vocal, we're here. We're, we're trying to, we're trying to get this, get more information, get this done. But we've still to see meaningful progress or movement by the council on this front. And so in short, now that the results of this traffic study are known, which types of traffic calming devices protecting the vulnerable traffic participants, namely those not in a vehicle, will we see on our block and equally importantly, on what timeline? What does that schedule look like and how will the city communicate progress and status updates to residents? Thank you.
Thank you so much Thomas. So there's definitely a strong representation from this block. I'm gonna counsel stuff to you guys who, what do you guys wanna do? I mean, we could address it in the SS4A, as part of you guys would like to address it. I'm talking about Luke, Jared, Valerie, or you guys wanna address it later? It's up to you if you guys wanna do it cohesively.
I'm happy to.
Oh, go ahead Valerie.
I'm happy, I'm happy to address that. So just so everybody is very clear, I am equally, equally very frustrated by the slow pace that we're moving on fixing our roads and streets. But I understand that we are working toward making sure that we have budget to support the improvements we're making. And so we did put, Luke, I don't know the exact numbers, 700 or 800,000 into the budget for streets and sidewalk improvements coming, starting July 1st. So today is June 6th, starting July 1st, I'm hoping that we can really push these things forward. That's, that's what I'd like to say, so thank you.
Thank you so much Jared, go ahead.
Yep, and I just wanna communicate that following up with Valerie said as well. I mean, this is an issue I care a lot about. I think I've mentioned to many of before. My grandparents were killed due to someone running a stop sign. I care a lot about this issue and one thing we wanted to make sure we did and the whole reason we did the traffic study was to look at this holistically. We have had a history of sometimes well-meaning safety measures going on one street, pushing things to another street. We wanted to be able to look at it holistically and also have a plan. And this is what we'll talk about later, if any of you are able to stay or watch it later, for it to be able to chase the state and the federal resources, which we cannot without a holistic plan and a approach and a data-driven and equity-driven approach to be able to chase those resources. So there's things we can do in the short term. We've allocated more resources than we ever have in the past, which we've been able to do partly with the availability of funds in ARP, American Resource Recovery Plan. As well as we're chasing, we'll be pursuing some of the actually largest grant opportunities ever available that just came about because of the infrastructure bill and the Inflation Reduction Act. So I wanna let you know that we're looking at this holistically, chasing all possible resources and pursuing those. And we're also, you know, looking to what we can do in the immediate short term now that we can look at the city holistically, know where the demand needs are. As, as folks notice, noted, they're, you know, obviously severe and in the, you know, the grid and the single-family house part of the city, they're some of the worst and some of the most dangerous in the most low and moderate income parts and renter parts of the city. Those are places we know and we know even more so now that we needed to focus on, that we don't necessarily hear from as well. So I just wanna, you know, happy to, you know, folks reach out to me and happy to discuss, you know, our thought, my thoughts on this and council's approach. Either here, you can hear later tonight, watch it later, or contact us individually as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Luke, I'm gonna go ahead and give you the mic to you. Go ahead.
Okay. No, thank you everyone for your comments on 31st Street. You know, I echo them. You guys know my kids play around there as well. My wife signed the petition and is asking me all the time, you know, when, when are we getting traffic calming devices here? So definitely understand it. If you would have heard our discussion during our FY24 budget planning, I think we made the specific comment that, well, first off, it's not just 31st Street. Residents on Bunker Hill have been waiting for the same thing over by 31st, 35th, 36th, 37th. And they say the exact same things. We, they see people speeding all the time. Our kids are trying to go cross the street to get to Joe's Movement Emporium or if we're walking to Glut and they wanna ride their bikes there. We hear the same thing on Perry Street on the south side of town, the same thing on Newton Street on the south side of town. People are cutting through off Eastern Avenue and speeding down our streets. You know, yeah, how, how can we calm it down, accident waiting to happen? It's, 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 it's going on in many places around the city. And during our FY24 budget cycle, we said, you know, even though we'll have this big plan, we can't just wait on the federal government and hope that the federal government's gonna fund this all. We have to have funding set aside to be able to do something here because residents in these areas need it and want it. And so, you know, we set aside $700,000 for this, which is more than we were putting to the buy. I mean, we, we made an effort to, to, to fund this out of city, city dollars. Only 100,000 of that is coming from ARPA. So this is like, even if it was just 600,000, that would have been, even without ARPA, that would have been the most we've been funding toward these things. The question was raised about the specific design and I'll talk about 31st Street. 31st Street was identified as a project, as one of the priority projects in addition to Arundel and Chilum and 34th and Bunker Hill. So what is happening now that tool design has done this Vision Zero test is they are now going into a little bit more details of, now, I won't, I won't call it engineering, but telling us what the actual traffic calming devices should be for that strip. And some of the ideas they've had have been, yes, speed humps, but also at Upsher and 31st Street, a really tiny kind of traffic circle that you, you might see them in like Tacoma Park or other areas where it's sort of flowers and kind of pretty and just slows down traffic at the intersection. And then maybe curb bump outs elsewhere on 31st. You could see it sort of, if you're going from Upsher towards Taylor, before the hill starts to descend, have a, have a bump out there. Maybe could couple as a stormwater retrofit area where you could buy retention. Then maybe something else towards the Taylor and 31st intersection. And the idea would be, once, once they do, and they're gonna do those design element build outs for 31st, for Bunker Hill, 34th, Chilum, all these priority projects. They're also gonna give us, setting aside those priority projects, a toolbox of design fixes for kind of elsewhere in town, because there are other areas that residents have expressed these same concerns. And so the question for us is gonna be, okay, now how do we allocate? We're, we're gonna submit an application for federal funding for a lot of this. And the question's gonna be, okay, what can we do now with our $700,000 and what should we do now? We can't, we're not gonna be able to do everything with $700,000, so what's the project that makes sense at the right price point? And then there's sort of a secondary question was, which is, if we can't do everything right now, do we do temporary measures, which could be what folks have talked about, the temporary rubber speed humps in locations? And that's another conversation, knowing that those would get ripped up at some point. And is that a cost and a waste that we'd be, we'd be okay with? We just haven't had those conversations yet, but that's sort of what this summer's about. Tool design, building out those design elements and us having a better understanding of what costs could be and making those decisions. I know that's not the best news, cause that doesn't mean that we're making a decision on this tomorrow and I'm sure that's frustrating to people. And, and I apologize for that and to the extent we can, you know, hasten these decisions, we can think through how that's possible. But I just wanna make sure everybody understands where we are in the process and how holistically we're trying to look at this and think about this. But I appreciate everybody for coming on tonight and making these comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the other thing that as part of historical context that I wanna make sure we bring up, it's not like, you know, the bumps are very expensive, but the same thing is that we have said over and over again, when we have gone out to companies and say, we need four bumps, you know, like in West Street, they're not coming for four bumps. And like our city has tried, I know Mr. Kamali has tried. And if they come in, they give you astronomical price, well, we couldn't even afford one, at least alone four in the same street. Because they have to bring all the mat, you know, all the items on it. And part of the issue that we've also been having is like, even if you put a temporary one, this is not a $300 solution. It's a lot more expensive, so that money will be taken away from the permanent solution. So we really need to think about like, do we wanna make sure we put, you know, cause each of those costs about 300 a piece plus putting it on and they do get ripped, you know, severely. But does, do in the long run, this is something that, is it gonna benefit us in the short term? Or is it just a make believe? Because we also have in the other side, people saying like, Luke, those tiny little things don't stop nothing. They're just like make believe things that you thrown there to make you feel good. But at the end of the day, they do nothing for you. But now you have spent a good, you know, $5,000 on those rubber pieces, right? That's about how much they each, you know, they cost to put them on and maintain them and ship in and get them to here, right? When you could have like, put a little bit more money and put another alternate solution. The other thing that we have learned through past history in the city is like, a lot of times they put a bunch of bumps, but they don't address the water storm management, the rain gardens that we need to do, the ability to have a bikeable, walkable city, the ability for people to go ahead and walk, because that's not what they address. So I know, trust when I say, cause I live in the south side. I'm between 34 Perry and now it is, you know? And my street is like, you know, one of the two-way street right next to wealth. So I have people go in and go out in my street in front of a park, day in and day out. So it's not sure for it. I know that in the first set of tools, like part of the things that we're trying to address is also 34th Street in front of like, in front of the schools, but also Bunker Hill and 32nd when it comes also to the school. Cause the last thing we need to do is fix one street. Great, we fixed 31st, now we're pushing everything in front of the school. And how will that end up helping us? Now we're putting even more people in danger. And can we afford putting like a bunch of those rubbers everywhere? The reality is we can, but now we're taking away a lot of the resources that we have in putting temporary solution instead of focusing and doing permanently. This study should be able to help us to say, if we need rain gardens, this is all the rain gardens we're gonna go after. This is the bumps we're gonna go after collectively, because it's easier for a, for a, for a collective construction, you know, group to come in for like a large amount of bumps than it is for them to come in for four. We cannot afford it, that's part of the reality, right? So I wanna make sure we also had the long-term contest. The last time we put bumps, Mr. Kamali, remember when it was? I know it was less than four, less than four, five years ago, when we did like-
2019, maybe.
How many street bumps did we put, Mr. Kamali, you remember?
It was 25 speed tables that we implemented and we could get a good price because once, as, as you mentioned it, you know, the contractor is looking for a big job, not a small job. So if, if they wanna come for five, it's gonna cost more than what we are expecting.
And, and I'm talking about 100, 200 dollars, the price was very significant. We almost fell for the price. I mean, at that point, we had gotten more. We wanna make sure it is holistically, because that is, that's part of the things that we are hearing severely. And we have seen as one area gets fixed, now you have everything affected on it. And please be aware that we are moving as fast as we can. And like Luke mentioned, this is the most money that we have actually allocated towards this project aside for like aggressively going after like fair funding to specifically fund this. One since 20, I wanna say seven, the budget 2018, right Luke? That was the first budget that we actually put our, you know, our hands on. We have allocated between 3% to 5% every year. That's the reason why we've been able to do a five-year project. We were able to do it in four, between some of the COVID relief funding, some of the city funding put aside to get a lot of stuff done. So I don't wanna be to think that it's falling on deaf ears. A lot of these things we have been working and we're pushing and we live in these communities. We, we live in those trees that are passing through. So it's not, that does not affect us, you know, specifically directly to us as well. So we're trying to make sure we move as fast as we can, trying to put as much funding as we can to make sure from the city we have it, but also reaching out. So I want you guys to know that if anything we could put temporarily, we'll put through. But also take into account that that might take a big chunk of what potentially like a permanent solution looks like. And we might move- And we move, we might move from the street to another one and trying to get on it. So it's a lot of good ideas, but want to make sure we do it right. And we're moving. Now that you have the study, we get to move on July first a little bit more faster on it. And the other question that was asked was how we're going to communicate. So Jared and Valerie, I would love for us during the summer last year and the previous years, we have done community blocks. If we could go ahead and have a meeting for the Thirty, Thirty Fifth Street and get the residents there to talk to them about the future plans and layouts and stuff like that, so we could communicate directly with the whole entire block surrounding Thirty One Taylor. It, it definitely will help. So let's figure out what the counter looks for us to make it happen. Same thing, Danielle and Luke will work on that. I work with you guys to put like the community, like reach us like I did, uh, I think it was a year or two ago. So make sure we're out there. We usually do, we could do two different weekends and get at least two locations, if not three in each war. So that we could move through to have the right communication, especially on how this plan is going to be played off. And our communication team, they are working on landing page on the, landing page on the city website that show that multi-projects are happening as well. So we are going to be working on that. Okay? Danielle, I seen your hand up, but I think it's important to tell people that historical context, so why is it that we're doing certain things? Because the solution is not always as easy as some people painted. Go ahead.
No, I, 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 I thought that my comment was being, you forgot I was here. So I wanted to make sure I got a moment to comment. I want to thank the three of them for coming. They've been, we've been communicating a lot over the last couple of weeks as a former first responder. And I know people get tired of hearing that. I know personally firsthand the importance of, of putting up even temporary speed bumps. And I respect all the research and things that you guys have done in the past. I did some research myself and found that, you know, ten-foot recycled plastic speed bumps can be obtained for two hundred and nine dollars. So I know that there can be, you know, a cost-effective, cheap and, and green solutions and temporary. So I do have a full comment that I'm reserving, statement that I'm reserving for the SSRA later. But I do want everybody to know that I do take it very seriously. And yeah, I, I, I really hope that we see a solution to this sooner than later, because we are now coming, I, I bet I'll, I'll save the rest of my comments, but I, I side with these, these residents. And I, I do want to see something done sooner than later. So thank you.
So back again, I'll sit down with this. I want you guys to know that this is not us versus you guys. We all have every bit of invested effort into doing this. And something I definitely haven't shared, back when I used to live in Los Angeles, I actually got hit by a car. And I was out of commission for a few days. So to me, it's very important to make sure that the safety in the roads are, are there. You know, to, to the point that I was hit enough where they were not sure if I, we've been, have a child. Right? And thank God for many blessings. You know, people believe in whoever they believe. That's great. But I was able to have one, but that is how serious like, this is to me and this is to the rest of us. I think we all have shared stories. We all have like family and children and, you know, we're very advocates for people that, um, street and walking out to you this. For Mr. Kamali, to Rosio, to Co, for every single one person in the staff. They're not there just like, you know, sitting down, waiting for an answer. They're looking out for measures to make sure we make our cities safer, because they're also heavily investing in making sure this, the city is walkable and safe. The other thing to point out, like we have part of the reports, like we are having talks about, is reducing the speed in the city collectively. So that way, we also address it in that way, in order to make sure that at the minimum, how do you call it, um, since the, the speed is reduced, it helps. The other thing, there's a difference between the little rubber bumps and bumps and the speed tables. The speed table allow for the people to be rise up. So when they walk, you could visually see them. That's something that we had aimed very heavily, even with the tool design study, to try to do, because at the end of the day, they might be there, right? But if you cannot see the person walking, even if it's in those, in those speed tables, right? It allows for people to also be hit, because they're not visualized, especially a lot of our seniors and our, and our tiniest residents. So please know that we're, we're working and, and we are moving and you'll see more information from, from all of us. And we are also working with Bramble when it comes to Thirty Fourth Street with some of our partners, also the PTOs. And the message has been sent out, because I do communicate with the other elected officials and plenty of us do, I know Luke and Jared do as well, Valerie as well, right? You know, to let them know that the S F for all is something that we're going to go after and we're heavily focusing on the safety of our city. It is a gateway city. It is the first city coming in from Prince George's County and the state. And we need to make sure that every effort is made to make sure our city is safe. So, so please know that we're on the same page and you are not being, you know, being forgotten. So, all right. So I have, so we'll leave it as that and we'll go, go on it as well. Okay? So I, I will say that we're going to work as fast as we can. Now, we have the study and we do have money that we're putting in behalf of the city and quite a bit of money to start looking at it. I know Mr. Kamali and Rosio are Public Works Director, looking into options as well as prices and different things like that in order to make sure they're moving as fast as they can at their end. And Danielle, if you have any information, please send it to them, so that way they could look into it, because they need to make sure what a lot of times when we have realized that the cost might seem like something upfront. And then everything else that ties with it could make something go from three hundred dollars to five thousand dollars, including shipping, putting it. And how many, I remember like originally we're looking at the pieces and people thought like, oh, you know, they, they researched the information, thought like, and then we realized, oh no, that's just for one little piece. It's not like the five pieces. But go ahead and give it to them, because us having it does nothing if they're the ones that need to research and they're the ones that do all this for us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for this. And thank you for the community members that came and spoke on it. We're working together. Okay? We're, we'll push on it. And like Luke and Jared, everybody else said, like, you know, Thirty First was identified one of the streets. So obviously we're all in the same pitch that needs to be done. And we're working along and making sure that cohesively, we do not push the problem now to like, you know, to Thirty, Thirty Second Street, like, you know, where we have like now the, the big bulk of kids coming in through the school as well. So that would, holistically, we could do more than one thing in, in making it happen. And that way, like, you know, solve the solution with every single tool we have to make it happen. All right? And we are talking to various cities also to figure out what they've done in their city. Not just Tacoma Park, but Riverdale, who had, who they reduced the speed over there and figure out what's been the advantage to utilize best practice. So you might not always see it like in front of the agenda, but plenty of us are doing behind the scene work and making sure we're like tying up the knots and, and moving and moving to have the, the stuff ready. Okay? All right. So, um, I don't, Jared, is there anything on the, on Facebook? Jared with a D. All right. Perfect. Okay. All right. So Valerie and Jared, I know Valerie had a system out, but let's work on the meeting for Thirty First Street and Luke will, will work on the, on the one, on, on the other side down the block. But I'll meet, we'll do, we'll do a couple of community events, then come out. And then I think that's what's helped us very much, you know, during the summer to go out and, and talk to the residents. I think we did that very well two years ago and it's, and it's helped. All right. So moving on to the next item. All right. So we have item number eight. This is all falls under all business, second reading adoption ordinance, number O six dash twenty twenty-three, the budget amendment number three. This will be our final amendment for this year. This, this is the second reading, so it is up for a vote today. You have heard this repeatedly read. So I think we have Ron Wilson on the line. He could like get us through this. And then I'm gonna ask for a motion for a vote to adopt. Do remember that after we vote tonight, we have to do a hearing that is going to be held right before the work session, which is the last work session of our fiscal year. So that way, we hear if there's any concerns from the community, if any. So that's what is key for us to take care of it right now, if possible. All right? So Ron, the floor is yours. Ron Wilson is our financial consultant for the city. All right. Go ahead, Ron Wilson.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Melissa, can you scroll down just a little? There you go. That's good. So in our budget amendment, in the revenue section for item forty-seven twenty point thirty-one, Maryland Safety Cameras Safe Streets Revenue, this is grant revenue that we're using in fiscal twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Line item forty-six ninety bond borrowing. This is the, the borrowing that the city did earlier in the fiscal year. And we're, we're amending the budget now to reflect that revenue. So the total revenue increases in this budget amendment are two million, two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Going down to the expense section, line item fifty-eight ninety-nine point thirty-one, this is the grant expense for the Maryland Safety Cameras Safe Streets Grant. It's the same amount as the revenue. In addition, line fifty-seven oh one, the Potts Hall redevelopment for two million dollars. This is the expense side of the bond borrowing that was in the revenue section. Then line item fifty-five twenty, we're adding interest expense for code compliance vehicles of a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Line item fifty-five twenty-one, this is principal for the code compliance vehicles of sixty-five fifty-eight. Line item fifty-five twenty-three, interest on police vehicle leases of four twenty-five. And line item fifty-five twenty-four, this is principal payments on the police vehicle leases of twenty-one thousand and five dollars. Line item fifty-five twenty-two, this is interest on public works trucks for three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Line item fifty-five twenty-five, principal for the public works trucks of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. And all of these were discussed during our fiscal twenty-four budget process. We are accelerating lease payments in, into fiscal twenty-three, because we have the room to do so. And finally, line item fifty-five ninety-eight contingency, we are reducing by forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. This is, is what we need for the interest and principal payments on those leases. And next, we are moving from the contingency, line item fifty-five ninety-eight, we're reducing by ninety-two hundred dollars, and we're moving that ninety-two hundred dollars to line item fifty-four oh two, professional services computers.
Okay. So that is a fair reading ordinance, O six dash twenty twenty-three, Ron and Kamali. That also, the last one included the contingency when it came to the line item for the computers, that, that included the work that it's going to be doing for our, for our server people.
Yes. Yeah. We already, we already finished the project. So right now we are serverless on a city hall and public works and code, you know, compliance. And the police department has the server that we can last another two years. So the total cost was close to ninety-two hundred dollars. The project was finished, as I mentioned it to you guys on my bi-weekly report on May sixteen. So right now, we're almost done and we have a high security and backup on the cloud for all the accounts that we have.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. I just want to make sure I get that one clear. All right, Council. I'm going to open it up to you guys for discussion. You guys could also make a motion and we could move through it. This is the second reading. And I know Ron Wilson has read every single line item, every single time. I know former Vice Mayor Jared Stoffes also did some, did some reading. You lucked out, Luke. But thanks, Ron. All right. So I'm going to open up the floor. If you guys have any questions, if not, if you're ready to put a motion, put a motion on the floor. So we can move forward. It is a forty at this point. Okay? All right. So Luke, I see the mic is open. Go ahead.
I was just going to move to adopt ordinance number zero six twenty twenty-three.
There's been a motion in the floor. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second it. Probably.
Sorry.
Taking too long. Today's the night that I'm making motions and seconding within a second. All right. So as we probably moved and second, I'm going to open it up for discussion. If there's no discussion, we'll move on for a vote. Does anybody wants to speak on this item? If not, I'm moving up for a vote. I'm hearing none. All right. So any abstentions? Objections? Hearing none. Ordinance number O six dash twenty twenty-three, budget member number three, has officially been moved. What's it called? With every single vote counted for. All right? So perfect. Moving on to the next item. Thank you, Ron. See, we didn't keep you here for too long. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. See, we were so quick that Melissa was like, wait a minute. All right. So item number eight, ARPA discussion and vote, number, discussion number thirty-one. Mayor and Council vote on the following projects, street and sidewalk upgrade for a hundred thousand dollars. Arte para todos second year, a program extension up to thirty-six thousand dollars, bike coop eight thousand, up to eight thousand dollars. You guys can reduce the amount. I know we were going between four and eight. If you guys want to go with four, I'm fine. And we could take care of it like today. So that way, it could go and print those books, because we need those books to print as soon as possible. Okay? All right. So I'm going to open up the floor. We do have a Brooke here who, the La Difere for Arte Para Todos, part one. And they are requesting an extension for part two with some additional funding. So go ahead and talk to you a little bit about what the project has been, the success. You guys have the report. I just sent it out to you guys. And what it, what year two looks like when it comes to us, you know, ideally funding it. All right?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mayor, and good to be here, Council and city staff. Wanted to say thank you so much for supporting the Arte Para Todos program in its first year. It has been a fantastic success through the different programs that we have offered in Spanish language. We have really engaged a lot of residents that haven't been participating, not only in Joe's programs, but sometimes school programs. We've had a really wonderful connection with the Spanish liaisons at both Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas Stone. We've done programs also at Thomas Stone in addition to Joe's. And we've been able to build out some additional social service partners. In total, we reached over eight hundred participants in this first year. And I think there's a real momentum and we'd like to keep sustaining it. We were able to get one outside funder that was a one-time grant of twenty-five thousand dollars to assist us with kind of bridges FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. So we'd like to ask for your consideration for renewed funding, so we can keep it going and then find additional support to make this ongoing.
All right. Perfect. Brooke, so they went above the goal of people they were trying to aim. And I'll tell you, this is, this, most of the people that showed up to the events are people that have never participated in city events. They were, they're very invisible. You know, they felt very invisible, but there's a lot of healing that needs to be happening. The events are open. Various people have participated and it's overall that I've actually attended a couple of them. And it's very reassuring to see how we're dealing with, not necessarily just mental health, but healing, communicating through art. And, and thank you, Brooke, as well for leveraging your relationships with the various collective groups, because our funding was great, but the reality, our funding alone couldn't have done half of the things that you guys did. So that, you guys had at least five or six different partners that also united forces in making, making this happen. But you guys were keen in making sure that there was outreach and communication, not just with the schools, but also like various programs in getting families engaged and connected. So I definitely want to make sure that is there. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the floor. If you guys have any questions for Brooke or any questions in general. The funding for the second year is definitely less than the first year. And so that's what it looks like on the screen. And this is definitely being proposed from ARPA. All right. Okay. So I'm going to go, Jared, Danielle, Luke. All right. Okay. So, uh, I'm gonna go, uh, Jared, Danielle, Luke. Go ahead.
Yep. Uh, thanks, uh, Brooke, for the work you've done so far. It's so much appreciated. Thanks for coming out tonight and, uh, well, making it, I think, a whole two hours into the council meeting, uh, and to speak and, uh, you know, thanks for your continued work, uh, in the community.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, uh, Brooke, we're bringing you back from your council member time, you know, like sitting in this guy, right? You're like, I'll see you guys later. All right, Danielle, go ahead.
Um, yeah. Hi, Brooke. Thanks for coming and, uh, talking about this. Um, this is a first I've heard of the Arte para todos. I hope I said that right, um, program. Um, what I heard you say about it sounds really cool. I'm glad that you were able to do, um, a, um, a section down there at Thomas Stone, which is in Ward one. So thank you so much. And, um, I, I look forward to learning more about it. Um, and, uh, yeah, so great. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Luke.
Brooke, as always, just appreciate everything you do for the city. Um, so happy to continue supporting this kind of pro programming in the city. Um, we'd have to talk to our, I think, our consultant on how we go about reallocating this funding, cause it might have to be a thing where we reallocate funding for this type of programming and Joe's could be the partner who applies for the funding, just like we had to do last time. So, um, but other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. Um, we still have some funding left, so this could be a good use of some of that money. I know we have to kinda, we'll, we'll talk about ARPA later tonight and see how much money's left over then. Um, but we, I think we have some room to, to move around some stuff. So just appreciate you, Brooke, and I'll stop talking.
Okay. All right. Perfect. So I also wanted to make sure, being a last legislative session, we have usually talk about the subject. Uh, we to talk then, because I know even when we proposed it out there, we had mentioned that, uh, we were open for an extension if the program worked. So the rules might be a little bit different because we're extending the program for one, uh, for one more year. So, uh, that's part of the reason why I also put it here to make sure that, um, so it's not a brand new program. It's just extending what we have, um, capitalized on it. But the original plan was like, if it worked, we would like to extend it for like, you know, at least, uh, you know, at least for one more year. Okay. So that might be a couple of talk that Mr. Kamali calls. So help us go through our, with our consultant to figure out what the next steps are. But it's been, uh, discussing in open meeting, which means that, um, you guys heard the information, you guys have the documents and we will, and then we'll decide what we wanna do and we'll add it to our list, you know, as we get the answers. And ideally, um, we could pull, um, legislative meeting to vote on if need be on the next, um, in top of the next work session. Okay? If it's not being done today. All right. Thank you, Brooke. And you know, have mad love for, uh, the whole entire team. They, they were, they were outstanding. It wasn't just the schools, but like the community, uh, as a whole. And you guys were able to reach, uh, residents that not even the city was able to reach. And that's been very positive to see the, the involvement and, um, not, not just to the kids, but the families as a whole, because it's, you know, it's been treated as that, like, you know, a family healing and working together. All right. So thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Perfect. So, um, let's move. Uh, can you put the agenda on the screen, Melissa? Thank you. Great picture, Brooke, by the way. All right. So we are in the ARPA discussion. So that's that. That was addressed. The next one is street and sidewalks upgrade for a hundred thousand dollars. We have talked this to death, you know? So Luke, if you wanna give a brief, brave summary of what it is, so we could like move on to the third item on the list. Go on.
Um, yeah. So this ARPA discussion, um, we decided to put a hundred thousand dollars in our streets and sidewalks into ARPA or take the money from ARPA, um, in order to be able to fund that big chunk of seven hundred thousand dollars that we talked about earlier. Um, and bike co-op, we've talked about before, just making sure that they have, um, the eight thousand dollars that they need to do some things that they feel they need to do on an annual basis. Um, and we just talked about Arte para todos. Um, and, um, I think those are it. Do you want me to pull up the document or?
You, you could, but I was giving you, asking you to do a brief interest, a brief statement about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That was, that was your opportunity, Luke. But so Luke will give us a run-through. Usually we go through a run-through of the stuff that we have approved. They're in color green. That means that we discussed and already voted to move forward to approve. We, um, we are gonna need some information, Mr. Kamali, if we have, and I'm sorry if I missed it, right? When it comes to our consultant, if we have allocated something and say for whatever reason, not all the funding needed to be expended, how do we go about reallocating if we just like put a motion to like, you know, change the fundings for something else, then we'll go through it. If you have that info, I saw, I see your head, Mr. Kamali. If you have that information, please let us know. Go ahead.
Yes. Uh, all right. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did reach out to our consultant and he just said that we have to make a motion. Mayor and council have to make a motion and I have an example that I'm gonna share with you guys.
All right. I mean, if you just have to make a motion to like, you know, um, change the amount and change it to something else, simple. Okay. So it's a simple motion. So good. We weren't sure if there was any additional paperwork. I know there's like, we have a yearly, um, report where we submit our reports. So for the next report, we just update whatever we, we have changed and we should be fine. But I think that for next year, that should be, um, uh, we should need to be having our I's, that is in our T crossed. Because after that, um, things might change a little bit on how to report and make any changes because money has to be allocated by next year to be able to expend, extend it to twenty five and twenty six. But the next report should show like every basically penny allocated. Right? And they will move if we need to change something, but that's what it's gonna look like because, um, when that report goes out, um, we need to make sure that they know that we are using every single cent. And if they give us more money, we'll use every single cent of that as well. All right. So that's mainly the plan. So thank you, Mr. Kamali, for making sure he gives the information. All right, Luke, you wanna do a quick run-through? A quick run-through being a fifty to at this point.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just go through the, the ones that we're looking at. So we've already allocated fifty thousand dollars for this public resource for Hispanic or Latino populations. We'll, 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 we'll have a vote for an additional twenty six thousand tonight. That would bring this programming to a total of seventy six thousand. Um, and then we've already allocated funding for Bud the Bike Co-op last year to help with window reconstruction. Um, and the rear shelter replacement, that was sixteen thousand dollars. What we're considering tonight is another six thousand dollars. And the streets and sidewalks, the reason why you have that there in blue is we've already reached consensus on that. So the potential additional allocation we'd have tonight would be, um, one hundred and thirty two thousand. That's the one hundred thousand streets and sidewalks, twenty six thousand, um, for the Latino arts, Latino arts programming and six thousand for, um, the bike co-op. Um, so that would leave us with, um, three hundred and fifty nine thousand, five hundred minus thirty two, so three hundred and fifty nine, uh, three hundred and, uh, whatever that would be.
Kamali, Ron Wilson.
I got, I just wanna let you know that I think it was thirty six thousand dollars, not twenty six thousand dollars.
That's what I was gonna say too.
Okay, you guys, one mic only, but Kamali.
How much was the, how much was the money for, uh, the arts programming?
It's thirty six thousand dollars.
For the arts programming, not twenty six?
No, it's not.
Gotcha. Okay, thirty six. Okay, let me.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Kam. I know I usually go Kamali and, and Ron, make sure we were able to provide. Luke, thank you for making sure you follow through with this document. After this, like, is submitted, uh, Ron, um, and Kamali usually like go through it to make sure we have the right amounts in there. But, uh, so they keep, uh, they keep account on every cent that goes through, um, and making sure, um, it, it happens. So as you're putting those documents together, I do wanna say that regarding Richardson Park, we have been having quite a bit of meetings with the youth because we did promise this is gonna be a youthless effort. So I've been going to classrooms through career day and I've gone to elementary schools, our, uh, feeding middle schools. And, uh, with Thomas Stone, I'm gonna get a bit of help with some of the teachers to get some of the votes from the kids before we open up like the next stage out to the community. But I wanted to make sure that, um, it was very heavily, uh, kid-led. And, um, we're looking forward to having events and, um, and selecting, uh, what are the options? So we'll have a presentation on what, for you guys to take a sense of like, how many kids have voted, uh, the grade levels and what option they strongly, strongly. Cause there's an option that's very strongly suggested in, in behalf of them. All right? Okay. So Luke, anything else to add? Um, I will tell you, I saw there was like actually six thousand for the bike co-op. I'm comfortable at four. Mr. Kamali has reached out to, I also have a conversation with Matt for them to utilize some of the funding. I know Jared did too. That they have, that they have not used this year in order to be able to put in, put the funding when it comes to, um, July and August. Right? The other thing is like that they have said that they need some things to happen. Um, but that is like, it has to go through Kamali and Rosio, cause it's a city building. So if we need like to go over and allocate funding for the building itself, that's might be a different story, but I don't wanna mix it up with what the bike co-op is being allocated itself. Because we already spent sixteen thousand dollars aside from whatever the budget line item is, right? To do fixes for the stuff. And we were told like it had it to do with them doing more work that was needed, but nobody could tell like, so you know, at this point Kamali and Rosio are, are basically saying, let us know what it is and we'll work it out. But I think that has to come from a sub-line item. Um, not from like the bike co-op. That's what I'm comfortable at four. And then like, you know, if Kamali and Rosio see there's some need for something else that needs to come out of it, specifically assign it under, um, under building for the bike co-op and not for supplies. If not, they're not gonna get the things that they need. Cause at this point, it's not a hundred percent clear what, what is it? But it has to be run through the city, cause it is a city building. So that's the only thing where I was, you guys could keep it up for to make sure that, um, it does not, um, it did not get mended into other items. Because, uh, they, they, um, they do have a line added budget and they're, my understanding is from what I was told, like, you know, uh, that they're gonna be looking to order in some parts um, before June to try to, uh, supplement what they need for this summer. And, um, and the bump up in the, in the amount was, uh, because of, um, potential stuff that they still might need. But the only thing that we originally had heard was like windows and the backdoor roofing and that was already taken care of, um, pretty efficiently by our team. Okay. So that's the only thing I will say, if we could leave it at four. And if we need to have a different meeting on it to allocate more money for, uh, any additional, um, enhancement that needs to happen, then we'll, we'll deal with that then. So that's the only thing I will ask for us. So that will, we separate one and the other. Uh, can you guys please, uh, put, um, if you guys have shirts, put them down? Um, okay. Um, okay. So council, I need to know where you guys are at. Um, I'm gonna go in order. So can we, um, the hundred thousand dollars for, uh, street and sidewalks, are we with that? We're good. Thumbs up. And we could make a motion individually or collectively. So we're good, uh, up to thirty six thousand for artists, but at those part two, where are we with that? Thumbs up, thumbs down. I see thumbs up. Uh, Luke, thank you. Jared, where are you at? Jared, you're there. I see Danielle put thumbs up pretty quickly. Jared, you're good. All right. So the bike co-op, my proposal is for four thousand dollars for right now. And if something more needs to be allocated, then we'll work on it. But at this point, I think four thousand should be good. All right. So I see, uh, Danielle, I need to know where you're at. Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Oh, no, I'm thumbs up. I'm thumbs up.
Okay. All right. So, um, so consensus on all three items. So Mr. Kamali, Melissa, Ron, we're, we're clear. And then Luke will go ahead and give you guys the beautiful document with the updated amounts. And obviously, as, as we say, check our math to make sure everything's fine. If something, uh, you see the math is not correct, um, alert us right away. So I'd like to make a motion, um, Millie, can you put, uh, the screen up in top so I could make a motion on the floor? Now, once the motion's on the floor, nothing else to stop it. All right. So I'd like to make a motion on the floor to approve a hundred thousand for streets and or, uh, from ARPA, um, up to thirty six thousand, uh, for Arte para todos year two program. And, uh, for bike co-op, up to four thousand dollars for the bike co-op. Can I have a second on the floor?
Second.
So it's probably moved and second. So we're gonna open it up now for discussion. All right. So Danielle, um, anything that you have to say regarding what we're gonna about to pass? If not, I'll ask for you guys to be ready for the vote. Cause it is nine o'clock and by ten o'clock, we should take a pause and we're not even halfway through the agenda. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. Does anybody know when we need to spend or allocate the rest of the money for ARPA or does it matter?
Yeah, I said it early in the conversation, has to be done before, uh, the twenty twenty four report of next year. So that's what needs to be allocated, that we have time. And that's what I said, like twenty twenty four, we need to like be on it. That's what Mr. Kamali found that through our consultant, if, if things we no longer need, like let's say we get a grant to cover four thousand dollars from the bike co-op, we no longer allocate this, we allocate it for something else. It shouldn't be a problem. All right. So Luke, Jared, we're good. So I'm gonna move up to the vote. If you don't have any other questions. Jared, you have a question or you're good?
Nope. And just a note that we, Danielle, we do need to allocate these, uh, there is timeline. There was an effort by the, um, uh, Republicans in the debt ceiling negotiation to rescind, uh, some of the COVID money, uh, and some of that did get rescinded. This was not. And then that agreement extends to the next two years. So we should be safe. But I just wanted to comment that it is important that we continue to find the right things to program this for, but make sure it's allocated by the deadline. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Twenty twenty four that has to be allocated for us to, the programs could extend to twenty five, twenty six, but it has to be allocated by twenty four. That, that's, um, correct, Mr. Kamali?
Yes, we can, uh, we need to finish by twenty four, but we can get an extension up to twenty six.
But the money has to be allocated.
Yes, the money has to be allocated.
Yeah. So the project could extend to twenty five, twenty six, like let's say like the scholarship money is gonna extend, the food program's extending, right? But it has to be perfectly allocated by twenty twenty four. Uh, what the process look like if we need to de-allocate money beyond that? That's a different, uh, question. Then the one we have right now, they haven't put that stuff up front, but we basically have been running this as if we're doing reports like quarterly to make sure that if they change their mind and they want detailed reports, we, we do have them. So saying that, uh, the various, uh, groups, the PTOs and Joes and anybody else that we have seen money to from ARPA that is outside the city, they are doing quarterly reports that they submit to Mr. Kamali and, and he includes them as part of our report to make sure that they've been followed through with the things they need to do and where they are with the projects. So that's definitely something that, uh, we, you know, we, we continue moving through. All right. So, um, all right. So, uh, I will, um, anybody from the public has a comment? Nope. Anybody on Facebook? Jared? Nobody on the phone? Okay. So seeing that there's no comments, I would like to call for a vote. Any abstentions? Objections? Hearing none. Uh, this, uh, goes, uh, four, uh, zero, zero. So it passed, um, unanimously. Okay? All right, Mr. Kamali. So you have your goal. So that way, that was the final thing you needed for, um, for you to take care of the budget, correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Perfect. Thank you guys so much. All right. Moving on to the next one. This is our work, um, the discussion of legislative action requests to amend some provisions of the state law that requires publication in a newspaper general circulation. We'll go ahead and discuss. We do have our city attorney here, Elissa, um, who will give us a little bit of information and for us to like basically direct her to, um, what to do next. Um, and this is a discussion that is going on in various cities, not just right now, but previously because it's not sustainable. Um, and it might have worked at one point, but it's not the reality of what it exists now. All right, listen, the floor is yours.
Okay. Hi. Good evening. Um, I'll be real quick. Um, the, um, Maryland Municipal Attorneys Group has been discussing the possibility of proposing to the league a legislative action request that will address, um, certain provisions of state law that require you municipal governments to publish certain things in newspapers of general circulation. Many jurisdictions have amended their codes with respect to things that aren't prescribed by state law to use um, methods of publication or methods of notifying the public that are both less expensive and more effective um, than traditional newspapers. Um, so there's been an effort for many, many years um, to try and amend these provisions of state law. And they, I mean, it goes back probably, the first effort was probably ten, maybe more years ago. And the, the press, the newspaper lobby has been successful um, in, in defeating those efforts. Um, so after those original efforts about, again, probably a decade ago, it was quiet for a while. And then, um, Gaithersburg tried again, and I think to two thousand fourteen or fifteen, um, didn't go anywhere. And then I had been unaware of Gaithersburg's, um, efforts. And so last year at the municipal attorneys meeting at the Ocean City Conference, I, I raised this issue, um, with the group and everybody was enthusiastic about trying to, um, engage in some effort to amend the law in some way to, uh, make the process at least at a minimum less expensive for you. But, but for me, it's, uh, the expense is only half the issue. The other half is that I don't think that publication in a newspaper general circulation is that term is defined, is really in this day and age, the best way of actually providing information to, um, the folks who are most interested in getting it. So I identified six state law provisions that require publication in a newspaper of circulation. One has to do with charter amendments. One has to do with annexation. One has to do a sale of bonds. One has to do with the planning commission's adoption of a plat. Um, that doesn't affect you so much because Prince George County. Folks don't have zoning authority. Um, there's the constant yield notice, although. The requirements relating to constant yield notices were changed in the last session. So you'll have to publish notification of tax increases. Only when you have an actual tax increase as opposed to a constant yield increase. Um, and then the speed camera citation ordinances. So there aren't, there aren't a huge number of provisions, but there are a number and the, the ones that will affect you mostly are the charter amendments and the annexation. Publication requirements and they are extensive and expensive. Um, so. The effort that Gaithersburg made last year that we didn't join in because I couldn't get myself together in time to do that. Um, focused on just the charter amendments. Um, I think some of us feel and Gaithersburg's strategy was. Take it one at a time and see what we can get done. Uh, I, I'm not sure I agree with that. I. Part of me thinks just rip the Band-Aid off and address all of them at the same time. Um, and, and so no sort of common decision, I think, has been made among the jurisdictions that are in favor of. Doing something in the form of legislative action request. And what I am looking for from you today. Um, is a vote of support. For the submission of a legislative action request to reduce the burdens of publication costs. Um, on local governance. I don't, I, I'm not asking you to take a particular um, position. Um, right at this moment, but we want to uh, because of the deadline for submitting in LAR. Um, is July first and that's rapidly approaching. Um, I want to have. Something to propose to the attorneys at our meeting in June on the twentieth, on that Monday. Um, so I'd like, and, and what we, what we. What I've asked all of the municipal attorneys to do and I'm asking you to do is to just get statements of support from their various client, clients because. The Legislative Committee of the Municipal League is more likely to take something up when it, it has widespread support. So. I'm looking for your theoretical approval of a legislative action request to amend all of those um, provisions. Um, requiring this kind of pu- uh, publication. Um, with the caveat that we as a group may decide on a more narrow focus when we talk about it at our meeting. In June and that's all I got.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I think the other issue to address and just, and I'll get it to you right now, Jared, is the fact that. In a lot of municipalities also, um, there is no local newspaper. So they sending it out because it's required. They're sending it out to. Other newspapers that don't even circulate in their city to be able to fulfill the circulating. So. Um, so the reality is like there's, you know, a lot of money is being spent. And something that the residents might like two or three might see it potentially in that newspaper. But because there's been a lot of closing of like local, like local, local ma- uh, newspaper. Um. I think at least for us, it's like we might have the big ones, right? But then it's like the highest, the wire might be the closest to us, but we don't have a Mount Rainier specific one. And that's been the case, I think, when this role originally got done. It was like when most of the cities had this going on. Um. And this doesn't means, this is not addresses our newsletter. Our newsletter is something completely different. This is like major publication. Um, so that's something that um. That, and it has to like, I'll tell you this, when we have put the, the budget in Kamali, so I'll tell you Melissa as well, it has to be in a specific session this much. To um, to get it done. And I'm not one her somebody say like, I saw the publication in the newspaper. They see it any other way. Uh, but um, I was very also happy to hear that. This like we do not increase taxes. However, we have to send a notice that says like. The taxes are gonna be increased because the yield increased, right? Making it sound like we are increasing tax and then people get really upset at us, right? We were like, no, we're actually decreasing, but because the yield went up is in this whole entire question anyways. So I just want to make sure that's also out there because that was one of the things that a lot of the cities were also commenting. The level of like newspapers to be able to circulate in our cities is not the same as it was before. So a lot of times it's being put in, in one in hopes that um. And one or two in hopes that it, it will, it will get to where it needs to be, but the reality is, is not there. All right. So I'm gonna open up the floor. Jared, I saw your head up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm, I'm so very supportive of this Alyssa. I uh, when I worked in local government in California, I mean, this was a constant thing that we had to. Address. Um, I'm, you know, very supportive of local journalism. Um, but you know, the California newspaper lobby managed to defeat. Efforts like this pretty consistently. Um, you know, and I, I believe in local journalism, but requiring municipalities to prop up. You know, with classified dollars, you know, things that arguably need to go out in a different, more effective and time. Less time constrained way is, is really important. So. I'm, I'm very supportive of your efforts here. It's makes things administratively a lot easier. Uh. And you know, we can communicate much more effectively on those particular items. Um, as uh, as, as well. So. Um, I actually had one really quick question because there's, we often had to do uh, announcements for certain types of projects, like especially public works. Is that? Something that is still a requirement in Maryland?
So no, um. It, when you, you're talking about kind of public work contracts?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, those have to be posted on email and marketplace and that's a whole separate issue. And that's actually, I think, cost effective.
It is. No, that's.
Um, yeah. So um, yeah, that, that one isn't one of them. And, and I just want to say so. And I should have said this in my introduction. I agree with you on, you know, uh, everybody, everybody, nobody wants the newspapers to go. Out of publication and, and it is, it may be the case that they require some kind of state subsidy to continue. But it shouldn't be on the backs of you all. Um, particularly like we shouldn't have to publish notifications just for the sake of the revenue. To the newspaper. I mean, if you, if the state thinks it's good to tax people to support the newspapers, then let them do that. But um. That's essentially what they're doing. They're just running it through you because then you have to tax your residents. To afford to pay for the publications that are pointless for you in many instances.
Yeah. Yep. All right. That, that was um, that, that completes my thought. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Danielle and then Luke.
Yes, um, I, I, I'm gonna, my uh, comment is gonna be in the form of a question. Um. How would you then propose we uh, post? Notices of annexation and charter amendments because not everybody does email. And um, I know that most of my family is like, I'm the only one who really does email, even though everybody else has accounts. How would we get those note- uh, notices out to the people here in our community?
Um, so there are probably a whole bunch of different ways that might be proposed to do that. Um, email, text messages, social media and all of that. I mean, I, I hear you're, you're saying that many of your family members don't um. Don't have, don't use email. Um, I, I think the population of people who have no electronic. Contact is diminishing rapidly over time. Um, there will be those people. Um, and um. But most people do have cell phones. Um, and so most people can get text messages. Um, and you ca- uh, the, the town newsletter may be a place to put things. I mean, there are, there are a bunch of different options. Um. I, I, I just, my experience is that most people who are getting, you know. Who are looking for notices, they're, they're not, you're, most people don't read. The public, the legal notices section of the newspaper. Um, right? So that, right now, that's what is being required of them. And, and I, I don't. I, I agree that there may be some problems reaching some small section of the population with solely electronic. Um, communications, but I, I don't think they're being much better served by putting the legal notices in the printed paper. I just, I. I, I, some people may read them, but I don't think most people do.
All right.
And you have to sort through, if you're doing that, you have to sort through a whole slew of legal notices to even get to the one that. That might remotely be relevant to you, right? They don't publish a, a, um, index. In the, in the newspaper every day. Here are the notices from Mount Rainier. Here are the notices for Kidded City. Here are the notices for Baltimore State, right? You have to go through every single one, the foreclosure notices, which are extensive, the, the, all, all the other things that people put. In the notices.
I, I think you answered my question when you, when you mentioned on the city newsletter, because if we were like doing an annexation, we could. Do a special in the newsletter and that would suffice as far as uh, notification on top of those who do get. They eat the uh, email blast and stuff, the people who repeat. Who prefer to get the newsletter, they would be notified in that way. So you answered my question. Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you, Alyssa. Uh, Luke, go ahead.
No, I totally support this effort. Um, Alyssa, thank you for bringing this to our attention and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So you heard I'm, I'm in support of the efforts. The other things like uh, the PGCA legislative committees meeting unfortunately on Thursday. When I'm supposed to be giving out a speech at the school, but I'm gonna try to jump in and alert this, put this in their radar. So that way they could um, they could start looking into potentially taking a stand and supporting because it's coming from. A chapter. It definitely, um, it definitely helps. But I think we also could bring it up to MML, um. You know, for the mayor's meeting to be part of them, then put in my notice. But at least I'll go ahead and add it to the. Legislative legislative points of the PGCA, the Prince George County Municipal Association. So that way they're aware of this and it's being put in their radar um, as well. Okay? So if anything further goes on as um, as we move forward, they could um, you guys could come in and present or like MML could do it, right? And I, I don't know if you're aware of this. I know you usually sit in the board, um, Alyssa, but. Um, for MML as well, for Maryland Municipal League and um, I just made vice president for the Prince George County Municipal Association. So we're there. So if everything works out that way, it, it should. That means also uh, we are gonna be um, vice president uh, next, the pre- in two years, right? But. Yeah, so we'll work through it.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So thank you so much. So Alyssa, I think we're, we're in support. Um, and. Go do the great work so that we could define it. And yeah, like they're very specific where they want it and that section looks like helps has said lose is basically. A dump for all legally, right? It's like the wild west of like here, right? And it's definitely not, um, I mean, I'll tell you this, like even with the news uh, letters, I do it more. I look at them more online than anything. And even the paper one is like, you're not sitting there going like, let me figure out what my rainier is doing with this. It's just not. It's not even like you had a notice saying, hey, by the way, on this day, all the municipalities are gonna be sending this out because it's not realistic neither. Everybody passes their budget as. As they need to, right? And it shouldn't be required for us to pass in the same day neither. I want to make sure that idea is not out there. But okay, so I think you, we gave you direction and where we're at and um, and I'll bring it up to the. To my, to our chapter and so that way they're also aware of this is happening and they could work on supported. Okay?
All right, great. Thank you. Have a good night, all of you.
Take care. All right, guys. It is nine nineteen. Um, so be fully aware of that and we're on number, item number eleven. Okay? Discussion and board on cities as vision zero action plan. I put a motion on the floor to support city's vision zero action plan. If you guys could second it, we'll open up for discussion so we could move it forward. Okay? And they could do a presentation if they need to be on this. Um, where are you guys? Can I have a second for this? And we'll just ask them to give us an upgrade. Thank you.
Second.
Is it probably move uh, first and a second? Um, I'm gonna open up for discussion and we do have Dan. Um, and also uh, Jay right here, I believe. Um, if you guys could give us an update of anything that was changed or added from um. Last meeting as a highlight point. And we could move on for the, for the vote, guys. Okay? All right, Dan, the floor is yours. Um, let us know who from your team, if it's your, somebody else from your team that would like to speak on this. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for having us tonight. Uh, my name is Dan Goodman with Tool Design Group. Um, I just want to remind everyone that um, as part of this process, we've had three task force meetings. We've had two public meetings. We've had a community survey. We've had four focus group meetings. And we had a council work session on May thirtieth. Um, and so this plan is a reflection of the community input. Um, this is the proposed final vision zero action plan. So recommendations are organized by. Safe road users, safe vehicles, safe speeds, safe roads, uh, post-crash care. Um, there are also recommendations for, for policy improvements in the city. Um, there is a project action plan recommended and performance measures as well. Um, I do just want to point out. Um, that we've done extensive safety analysis. And so a big part of that was creating. Um, a high injury network that really mapped corridors where the largest numbers of people um, have most been, been most seriously injured. And so. We used the high injury network to create the project action plan. Um, and we. Um, will then kind of moving forward, speaking to, to, I want to thank everybody that spoke earlier in the meeting. We really appreciate it and I want to emphasize that we hear you. Um, this plan is the first part of, of the project. Um, and as, as Luke mentioned earlier, the next part of this project is to develop design concepts that, that. Basically take the project action plan that is identified in the vision zero action plan and, and. Show design concepts on what that actually looks like, but it's really. Needs to be predicated on the safety analysis and that's why we've done it in the order that we've done it. And so. Um, we will be doing concept designs over the next few, few months that, that respond to a lot of the specific items that, that folks have raised. Um, including the things on Thirty First Street and at Thirty First and Taylor and, and other locations. Um, we'll do the concept designs and as Luke mentioned, we'll also be doing a design toolbox. And so we will be. Um, looking at specific locations for things like traffic circles and curb extensions and pedestrian refuge islands. Um, and then we will also be showing kind of a toolbox of where you can do other things. Everywhere in a lot of different locations, things like um, speed ma- management and high visibility crosswalks and, and daylighting at intersections. Um, so that is the, the, the primary purpose of this. Um, you'll see. Um, the concepts and the, the toolbox in the coming months. Um, we do have one more public meeting and so we are happy to work with the city to, to make sure that we respond to what we heard tonight. Perhaps at Thirty First Street, um, as recommended by the mayor. We'd be happy to participate in that. Um, and you'll see appendices coming later, um, which will include some more detailed crash analysis, the existing conditions memo, the design concepts and the toolbox. And we'll be working in close coordination with the city council and the city manager um, throughout that process. Um. Um, regarding things that have changed about this. So the council kind of reviewed this document and we discussed it at a legislative session last week. Um, we've incorporated the feedback that we heard at that meeting. Um, we did add one, one um, primary thing, which was a, a. The concept of a vision zero coordinating committee, something to help track progress in this area moving forward. And so that is just. Um, something that as we talked and finalized the document, we thought it was important to have some entity. That, that makes sure that we are tracking what's happening coming out of this process. Um. That's the primary thing that has changed other than um, some refinement of the crash analysis result. The discussion of the crash analysis. Um, was revised a bit over the last week, um, largely on what we heard um, from folks and also just to streamline the text and clarify text. Um, I think that's the, the, the primary things, things that have changed. Um, we did update some graphics as well, but it's, but, but the content is largely the same as what, what the council reviewed and discussed last week. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, um, or provide additional information if it'd be helpful.
Perfect. Thank you. So guys, do you have any questions or need to do with this? If not, we'll be up to a vote. So any questions? If not, I'm moving to a vote.
Um, I have a comment.
Hold on, wait. Does who else has a question besides Danielle? Luke, Jared? We'll wait after. Go ahead, Danielle.
Okay, um, I um, prepared a statement um, about this earlier. So I'm just gonna read through it. I've made some modifications based on the. Comments earlier, but um, anyway, this is my statement. I am still new and learning about the projects that were started before I even considered running council. I do want to thank Luke for taking the time to do what he could to bring me up to speed. Um, the best he could on the um, SS four A grant and the vision zero action. With that said, I do have a problem um, with a couple of elements in the proposal as it stands right now. Um, with the ten elements that were outlined. So I do want to go on the record that I am against the road diet on Chilum Road. I feel that this would be creating a solution to a need that does not exist, i.e. the bike trail for the West. Haytville Metro um, via this road. While causing more stress and angst for shoppers and commuters to use the road to get to and from our area from DC and to come apart daily. Which could lead to a greater potential for more accidents. Um, I'm also disappointed with the lack of suggestions and planning that were presented for the inter residential areas of Mount Rainier. Really, if we really want safe streets for all, we do need to consider those who live in plate here and not just those who drive through once or twice a day. The only two projects in the tool, um, outline, uh, the 10, um, listed, um, were for the residential areas of the bike boulevards on 31st and 30th Streets. I want people to come to Mount Rainier and travel on Queens Chapel, Rhode Island and 34th because that is where our businesses are. However, I'm not a fan of people using our inter residential streets just as a cut through. Making it more difficult for that to happen would, in my opinion, make our residential streets safer for us. As for the grant money needed to do these projects, I am in favor of applying for this grant and will support it under the hopes that these issues I have mentioned can either be revisioned with a safer, more logical solution, the inter residential streets be more of a focus, and that temporary speed calming devices get placed around the food forest park now so as to protect the children and families who frequent the park. And we'll do so more now in the school, that school is ending and warmer weather is here. I feel that ignoring the immediate need for temporary speed calming devices in this area, um, does not show our true commitment to our community that has to be safe streets for all. We did discuss that earlier. So like I said, I modified some of it. Um, but I did want to go on the record, um, with, uh, my opinions of that, but I am in favor of the grant. So thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Luke.
And Jared, you have anything to add? And this is just one person. I want to make sure that we're not making all complete changes and one, one edit. Okay. Because there's a lot of people that have been working on this project and not just for the last three months. This is a process that's been going on with Tool Design for years. Uh, for the last five years, we have been working on, on this. Uh, so Tool Design has actually won both of our, our, our on it. So this is not something that just started yesterday. This is like years and, and works. So Luke, go ahead and, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just say Danielle, appreciate your comments. Um, I just want to say a couple of things. Um, you know, I, I think the reason for the focus uh, just being on the vision zero task force, um, all the residents that were on the task force, um, and I know myself and Jared were really interested in what the data showed and, and the crashes that are occurring, um, and the safety issues that we're seeing are really along that Queens Chapel, Chilum, uh, area, um, and elsewhere. And, and, and yes, that's, that's not where sort of single family homes are located, um, but it is where the majority of our residents live. Um, and so shrinking that road at Chilum Road is very important because that Chilum and Queens Chapel intersection, section is one of the most dangerous intersections that the city interacts with. So I think it's very important. I think that project is very important. It's not just for the bike, um, route to West Hyattsville. Um, it's because when you look at that heat map of accidents, it's Queens Chapel and Chilum is a big, is a big problem there. So finding ways to address that, uh, holistically, um, uh, both north and south of, of Queens Chapel, I think is important. Um, I also want to make sure everybody understands that, um, you know, this, this, this toolbox of, of, of stuff that, um, uh, Dan and his, his team's going to give us, um, we'll, we'll be able to apply to the rest of the city in our little residential community. Um, I shouldn't say in our residential community, in our, where single family homeowners live, um, because we have residential, we, we have people who live here and work here and play here, um, not just where single family homes are located. That's, um, and so, um, but we, we will have solutions for those areas. Um, and 31st Street is, is both a priority project and something that we could do something temporary with those. We should, we should have those conversations and those are good conversations to have, um, and, and happy to engage in those and what makes the mo- the most sense there. Uh, which is really appreciate the work Tool Design and everyone has done. Um, Danielle, I appreciate your comments and your thoughtful, the thoughtfulness in which you, you bring, even though you're new, um, and, um, just excited to move forward with this. I think we're going to get a great, I think we have a great chance of getting federal funding here and really transforming, um, the lives of people in Mount Rainier. Um, I think the space in which you walk in has a big impact on, um, your life and how you feel. And I think we have a really good chance to change that for the good, um, um, everywhere in, in the city, not just in the five priority projects. I think that toolbox will be really good for us to use in multiple places. So thank you, Mayor. I know I've said too much.
No, I think, I think it's key, especially when it comes to context of what the project is, it isn't, you know? Because just like the other, the other two design, uh, project that we had, they were priority areas, but then extended beyond those, right? But it gave us a holistic approach to the problems that we have because the problem's only going to move from one street to the other. And we do have two elementaries that are surrounded by a bunch of homes, right? But most of our residents, uh, the high level percentage of them are people that are not driving, are people that are walking and taking public transportation, not just from the apartments, but also from the homes. So for us to just focus on one over the other, it, it doesn't, um, it doesn't make sense. That's the reason why it's good to have the whole holistic approach and figure out on, on where we're going. So Jared, go ahead and, uh, the first yours.
Yeah. And thanks Danielle for your thoughts and for, um, you know, stepping up. I know it's, it's, I can tell you when I got on council, it was, uh, so much stuff going on, uh, getting, picking up stuff midstream. It's, it was a lot. So I appreciate you, uh, stepping up and, uh, you know, bring your thoughts and your feedback, um, to this effort. So, um, I did, I did want to say, you know, I, the comment about Chilum, I mean, I'm going to echo Luke here. You know, one of the reasons we looked at the holistic, um, study, uh, that looked at the city as a whole was because, um, you know, oftentimes in our city, sometimes the places where, uh, folks may kind of, uh, bring their voices to the table aren't necessarily where the needs are. Um, you know, in the entire city, there are needs in some parts of the city, but, uh, sometimes folks, uh, folks that have, you know, maybe lower income, maybe, maybe renters and so forth, um, you know, don't necessarily, you know, have, have the same, um, same voice. So, uh, you know, that's one reason we went through this sort of data-driven and equity-driven approach that looked at, you know, where are the impacts, where are the safety issues across the entire city? So, you know, I mean, Chilum is a, uh, you know, is a really, is, is dangerous. I mean, if you're in the, you know, do I, I don't traverse it nearly as often as other parts of the city because I live in the southern portion. But if you're in an apartment, in our rental apartments, if you're crossing the street, if you're biking, it is, it is not safe. So I still want to focus on, um, everything we can do within the bounds of the city and in adjacent areas that State Highway Administration DC owns to make things safer. And I think we've, we've heard that resoundingly, you know, focus on everything we can fix in the city. And then this plan also helps us lean in on Queens Chapel Route One, which our State Highway Administration and Eastern Avenue, which is the District of Columbia. So, um, I did also just want to comment like, you know, so there's kind of focused corridors that, that tools identified, but us being able to chase, uh, resources from, um, the federal government, uh, especially for SS4A is going to let us do things like everywhere if needed. You know, we're going to be able to, um, do a lot of these, uh, kind of smaller improvements that'll improve safety. So I want to, you know, that's the part of the toolbox that Tools, Tool Design Group, um, is, is going to bring to us are these different tool, these different strategies, these different things that we can do to slow traffic down across all the city. I don't want people to think that, um, you know, we, we came up with this plan and obviously there's some focus areas like, you know, Chilum and Bunker Hill, but then that means everything goes there and nothing happens anywhere else. So, you know, the, the whole point of this is a holistic plan for the city tools that we can use on the identified, you know, critical sort of corridors where people travel, uh, and then things we can do across the rest of the city to make things, um, make things safe. Uh, and again, I just want to thank Tool Design Group for putting this together. This is something we could have, we could have never pulled together something of this depth, professionalism and thoroughness. And the re- the reach you did in this is just really incredible. And I think we're really well set up for, um, uh, you know, a, 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 uh, a process and a, a, a grant that will hopefully, um, be successful this year, if not this year, hopefully in the next year, um, for us to, uh, us to be able to make these changes and this real transformation for our city without us being able to chase SS4A or hopefully something similar to the state. We're not, you know, we just don't have the capital to do this. So this is, this, this whole effort and your assistance and your guidance and your partnership has been really critical. Thank you again.
Yeah. Thank you guys so much. I, I think that, um, I think you guys hit Danielle in the head repeatedly when it comes like, not just earlier, but right now, that this is a means we're only like focusing on those streets. Like I said, they have tools for the rest of the city. It's a holistic approach because what we have seen, uh, you know, back in twenty seventeen, when the Tool Design went out, like right before we got elected and then we had to implement it, right? Is that does Wakamo approach, Luke's favorite word, right? Was not working. We were moving the problem from one end to the other. So now if you didn't have people like screaming from one side of the street that you were not doing, now you have the next street now yelling at you because now you move the traffic over to them. And realistically, it was not working. In order for us to do that, they, they like literally walk every single block and alley of the city to figure out where the problems were as a pedestrian level. Obviously they rode and everything else, but that was part of the things. And I know for a fact, because I kept running into them when I was walking and doing other stuff, right? But it was important for them to do, go to that level of depth. Now I just be like, okay, here are the people that are shouting the loudest, you know, here it is, right? The other thing to take into account, Chilum might not seem like a big issue, but we do have two buildings full of seniors in that end, and that's where they shop and that's where they do the many things. So to me, Chilum becomes very sensitive because of the reason. You have people feeling into those apartments, uh, but at the same time, you have your seniors who are going across the street, uh, to make sure they, they purchase the items that they need for their groceries and various things. And one of the things that we have heard loud and clear that they don't feel like, you know, the street is safe, right? So to me, we have worked very well with MDOT as well as with DC with like, you know, um, PG and the state to make sure that the big artists of our city that are fitting into our city, right? Because whether we like it or not, we're a small city sitting very close, like literally like next to DC, um, next to big cities around us. And that traffic, that flow affects us. This, we're in a nice little city that we're like in the middle of grass nowhere. And, you know, let's just focus about people on it. The reality is like a lot of people are going through our city, our own residents, getting from point A to point B in the city. Um, even when we're running like, you know, licensed place when people, and that's where the studies come in handy. And they have said, oh, like there were a bunch of outsiders doing this. And then this, you know, PD started running plates. It was people from the city of Mount Rainier doing this. So guess what? They were not outsiders like going to Bunker Hill, like randomly getting to the other side to other cities. It was their own residents getting, you know, skipping through eastern to get to wherever they need to be. Same thing goes for Otis and thirty four, they're the feelings, you know? We have the realities, like most of our people work outside the city. So eastern thirty four, Chilum, you know, Otis and all those wonderful streets become very big features for people getting in and out of our own town that are our own residents. So in saying that, that was the big eye opening to many of us to realize like a lot of those people like not stopping were our own residents, right? So, um, but that also took like, you know, data and study to do. So overall, we need to make sure it's a holistic approach on what it looks like. So once again, Tool Design, thank you for the work that you guys have put together. Um, the various meetings you guys have held, I know some of them because, you know, our community residents has been key to make sure that also those, uh, people that are very voiceless, right, are also represented. Sometimes we tend to forget that, you know, um, more than 2,000 doors and that side of the city where Chilum and other areas that are renters. And that's like, if one person live in those apartment, that's 2,000 people out of that 9,000 people that we are. But the reality is more than one person is leaving there. So even if you double easily, you have most of our population living in those, um, apartment buildings that are often feel like Chilum is somebody else's problem, you know, like thirty four is somebody else's problem, but very much is our problem, you know? So for, uh, for that reason, I was also interested to see they guys not only dealt with streets inside the city, but the problem that was being surrounded around us in order to be able to talk to our allies and figure out, um, continue carrying the conversations where we started. Now say like, look, this is data that shows A, B, C, and G. Now we need to make sure we continue moving with the process because the communication that we had with the various entities, whether it's the CPG, the state, right? Um, and even the county council for the unincorporated areas, those are going to continue to do. But now we have a tool and information that we could say like, this is what the information report and this is where you need your help as we're also addressing the items in the city. And we said it clear, even putting our whole entire budget into the problems that we have, it wouldn't be enough money to be able to, um, address everything we have in a year. And that's the reason why the multi-year approach has worked for us, but also being able to go after money to be able to expand it. So in saying all that is, you know, simple saying like, you know, it's important for us to be able to, we have a clear understanding of what it is and what it isn't. And to let residents know that we are taking all that information on it and, um, and if you have any questions, please reach out to us. Uh, quite a few of us are very like embark in this. I know our, our team is, you know, um, and, and we could get you across of what it is and what it isn't because there's a lot of documents. But once again, it's not focusing one. And we'll look at temporary solutions, but also figure it out. Like if we address the temporarily solution, that also means we're going to be going to a different street, going permanent. And that's a temporary solution you might have until we come back around and, and full circle. So that's something to take also in consideration because we cannot be pouring, you know, uh, $20,000 on, you know, on one street and leave all the streets with nothing and then come for temporary and then come back on the same year and do, um, permanent when we have other cities that now we will have to address because that traffic will be pushed. I a hundred percent will tell you, it will be pushed to the streets next to it because people will avoid that one street as they walk on it. And once again, heavily is our residents going through those streets and doing this. It's not just outsiders. So be very aware of this situation. So thank you guys so much. And if we don't have anybody from the public, they did spoke in the public, uh, comment, we do thank you guys for those comments. And like I said, um, we are going to be going out to the community to talk about the plan, the next steps and, you know, also hear you guys out. I think we've done a very good job in the last, you know, at least I could speak for myself and Luke in the last six years and in the last, I said four now, Jared? In the last four with Jared and also the last two, uh, with Valerie and, you know, Danielle is, uh, relatively new. Uh, so nothing has gone there yet. All right. So there's been a motion on the floor, uh, properly moved and second, I will end discussion at this moment and, uh, will ask for a vote. So any objections, abstentions? Hearing none. Uh, vision plan has been, um, approved and we'll go ahead and continue working on the very light details that go on it, but that gives us wings to continue going after everything we need to make sure this package is set up. Okay. So to design, um, thank you guys so much for your work on this and, you know, your continuous work with the city. And I see you have a, a banner in the back that says it's also like, what is it? Your 20 anniversary as well? So we're glad we've been partners for at least six of those 20. All right. Okay. Perfect. Um, so I do see a comment, Kiara Austin, Amarhar, uh, okay. There's a whole list of people. Okay. I need name, uh, name strip block and on it. So a number of times this evening has been said for facing that is we spend money on their first republic issues. We are making money away from other community members. So solutions that aren't thinking holistically, I encourage you to think the first thing and feels disrespect when reflecting and listening. We're thinking about safety just like yo. I think that nobody is saying that you guys are not thinking about safety. We're just working cohesively and trying to get everything together because this problem is not going to stop unless we think about it this way. All right. So just want to make sure that that's the reason why we use the word holistically because that has helped us, um, make the changes and the adjustments for the city, um, in making sure that we address, uh, the situation and in all aspects of the world, um, because it's not one problem being pushed from one street. So that is not going to help. Um, and I, well, okay. If you feel I missed your point, that's fine as well. All right. Moving on to the next item in the agenda. All right. Discussion involved on partnership with Trench First School of Public Policy. Uh, Luke, go ahead and read the paragraph and tell us about what it is and, uh, what are, was being proposed. They work here in the neck, in the last work session.
Um, okay. Um, so this was, uh, we had, uh, GW come and present to us at the work session on this program. Um, it's a program where their grad students in the School of Public Policy, uh, can do a project for us, uh, pro bono, no cost to the city. Um, and we just have to submit a short application. Um, uh, it's, it's very, it's just a one, it's just sort of a, a, a single form that I'm, I'm happy to submit. Um, and the idea would be on the project that we would submit an application for is to have their house and helping us design an economic development plan for Rhode Island Avenue that focuses on increasing the density on, along Rhode Island Avenue, um, and creating a, a vibrant downtown core. So making sure we, we, we try to bring in the businesses to the vacant storefronts, um, that we know are there, um, redevelopment areas that are, are maybe a little bit dead and think through, um, you know, this, the best course of action when it comes to the properties that the city owns, um, how the county can play a role with its redevelopment authority and maybe how the state can play a role as well just by controlling Rhode Island Avenue there and having really, uh, I hate to use this term because we've used it a bunch tonight, uh, holistic, um, plan for what we can do, um, um, for Rhode Island Avenue. Um, that's not just, uh, kind of just tactical. We're doing this thing this year and this thing next year. Um, it's thinking long-term about what we can do, um, to really make the kind of downtown core we all, we all want. And so I'm looking for support just to, just to let me submit. I'm looking for support just to let me hit send on the application to see if we get selected. That's what I'm looking for. Or answer any questions you have. Or answer any questions you have.
That is it. I was like, and what is it specifically you're asking for? It is, uh, so uh we'll go ahead and talk about this subject right now, but it is nine forty seven based that are in our, you know, council rules. I do have to do a check in two hours and a half into our meeting. Melissa, how many more items that we need to cover? So we're number twelve out of how many items, Melissa? Do we have like?
Four more. Um, it should be four short one.
Okay, so it's four short one. Let's power through with them so that we don't have to postpone this meeting to anywhere else. Um, okay. All right. So Luke, I'm gonna open up the floor so we can move over with the conversation. You heard what it is. Um, and to the residents that were not here in the last meeting, they did came and present last meeting. Uh, so we got to meet uh the advisor who's also a Monterey resident, correct Luke? Um, and we're eager, we have worked in collaboration with the University of Maryland before in various projects. So this is not out of the norm. Um, it is a new relationship with them in the least in the last six years that we know of, right? But um it's definitely a good resource to um think of um overall, if we don't wanna use the word holistic and overall approach. And um and what's going on in the city. I think that we use that word a lot, but I think there's a lot of moving parts that go with the city when it comes to economic, when it goes to like building, when it goes to facilitate it. So we're we're trying to make sure that everything works together and synchronicity. Because if not, it becomes a big mess really quickly. So that's part of the things that we're trying to make sure collectively, we see uh not just like micro but macro, um, you know, eye view of a of a whole entire picture for the city. So that's a brief summary, Luke. All right. So uh Jared, Danielle, go on.
Um, Jared, Jared first, wait, wait, wait.
Go ahead, Jared.
No, I I'm fully supportive uh and uh no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I I just wanna ask one question, just so people here that are listening can hear. Um, will this partnership cost the city any money? Other than that, I I'm totally supportive, but I think that's a question that a lot of people will ask.
Zero, zero dollars.
And that's a beautiful amount. Thank you, Luke. And I I do support this. Anything that will help vitalize and revitalize downtown and bring more businesses in, I am all behind.
So I am support Luke, but I wanna make sure that the collective is working with the economic development department because they do have a vision and work to do it along with our city manager. So they're not out of the process because there are lots of work that's been put across because for many years, right, we have been working heavily in Main Street. So I wanna make sure that none of those efforts are being uh is being put aside, but also that if we're applying for Main Street eventually, like, you know, right now we're in affiliate, right? That those efforts carry through and it doesn't delete the work that is being done right now. But it also enhanced it in that way to make sure we walk within the same the same sign of vision because I don't wanna like put pause and erase everything that we have worked on as well. There's been a lot of years of effort. This is the reason why we got a lot of funding to do that redevelopment in Rhode Island. You know, the what's it called? The facade improvement, right? And the facade improvement that's coming down on thirty four and so on and so on, right? So let's make sure that they're working cohesively so that we're all on the same page. Um, and we find solutions to how to, you know, revitalize and figure out everything that's going along and how's it gonna be executed? Because right now, one of my big concerns is like we we're having a lot of things going on. That's the reason why we're taking uh slower steps with certain things, right? But we have a lot of construction going on in the city between Memorial Park, Pots Hall, the work that's gonna be going on in Emerson uh Park and everything else as SS4A. So I wanna make sure that, you know, all of that is like in sync together and making sure the facade improvement applications in the Main Street is all all tied um appropriately. Okay? So let's make sure that uh econ director and city manager are part of that conversation. So that way we're focused, um we're focused on what the city looks like in their eyes and they could take that day to day stuff that uh we might not be heavily involved on. All right? So you need a motion on the floor, Luke?
Um, uh, sure. I mean, I don't know if I need a motion, but as long as I think there's consensus, I'll go ahead and 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 submit the application and get that in.
So I will do official vote, just to have it on record because that will facilitate because tomorrow people are like, I don't remember this being brought up.
So I'll, 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 I'll motion that we uh move forward with um the application to the George Washington University's Tracking School, Trackingburg School of Public Policy to help us in designing an economic development plan for Rhode Island Avenue that focuses on increasing its density and creating a vibrant downtown core.
I second.
All right, as we properly moved and second, um, I will, we already had discussion. If anybody in the public that wishes to say something, uh, let us, let us know. And nothing on Facebook, Jared? Jared, did the? Nope. All right. So uh any objection, abstention, hearing none, uh, go ahead, Luke. Hit send. All right. He's like, sorry, been done. All right. Thank you so much. Um, all right. So moving on to the next item, um, discussion and vote on letter of support for the Ramada Bus Network redesign. Um, so as um Jared was very good at putting a whole entire PowerPoint presentation that does and those are things that we love and also love so much. Now the next step uh that he was asked for was, you know, put a letter together so that we could move forward on the things that um put opinion in the city. I know we already said something out previously, but this is even more detailed on on what we see that um we supporting and not and how it would directly affect our residents. Um, and like we pointed out, heavily amount of our residents uh do take a public transportation to get to and from um locations in the city, through the city and outside the city. So Jared, the floor is yours.
Yep. And and mayor, I just wanted to clarify when uh we we did submit something into Womata Board of Directors previously, that was uh about the uh yellow line, uh sorry, green line getting uh turned back, or sorry, yellow line getting turned back at Mount Vernon Square and not extend anymore. So this would be the first time, this would be the first time we've sent something to Womata staff and the Womata Board of Directors on um on this topic. So uh just a reminder for anyone watching, uh, Womata is proposing a sort of network redesign of the entire bus system. Uh, it 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 would be a uh proposal that would increase the amenable bus service by about um thirty five percent. Uh, so it's unfunded, uh, that additional amount. Uh, that funding doesn't come from us. It comes from the state, it comes from the federal government. So they'd need to find additional money, but um as they look to decide what to keep to, you know, as they re as they reimagine the system that it looked to decide what to keep, what to not, um, what to not include, especially in a budget constrained environment. Uh, what we're, what what we're, what we we need to do is come forth and say, hey, this is important to us in our community. So everything in this letter is basically uh all the things that we we talked about earlier. Um, so basically I just quick, I'll just very quickly go over talks about, you know, the city, Womata's ridership, Mount Rainier, uh, you know, Prince George's, uh, the inequities we kind of experienced being in a job poor part of the region and how important transit access is, especially that so many of our uh members of the uh uh members of our community not have cars. Uh, Melissa, can you go to the next? Um, and I just said, you know, we support this for a couple of reasons. It increases the frequency of lines to and from our city. Uh, provides twenty-four hour service in and out of Mount Rainier, which we don't currently have. It ends at like one AM, picks up at five. Uh, extends two lines that currently terminate within Mount Rainier, one at Kwood and one at the downtown transit terminal, runs them both to the West Hyattsville Metro, which increases a lot of access for folks, especially in our apartments at the northern end of the city who've had to walk almost fifteen, twenty minutes to just to get to the Green Line Station. Um, you know, to get to work. So uh this is, it's really huge benefits. Um, we I've also asked that they consider some of the um following as they can um take input on this uh this proposed network. Uh, one is that they implement some near term changes immediately. Some of these things um can happen in the near future, uh, like our our my proposal, you know, if we can, if we just have to extend a bus half mile to West Hyattsville, that's great. Those are things we can do much quicker than, you know, some of the longer term uh opportunities like uh, you know, re reorienting or generating new new bus lines as as they proposed. Um, one second thing is restoring express or downtown service along Rhode Island Avenue. Um, I, you know, talked about this on the session, folks email me about this, that we would really like to have uh that back. Uh, and we're like, will Motta consider this? I just wanted to flag that uh council member Zachary Parker also flagged this as a issue in his note, his uh letter to Womata, which is linked to here. And this was a common thing that we both uh both agreed on. Um, maintaining commitment to minimum rail or bus service uh levels, though, you know, if you have to transfer more, which you will, um, they're able to run more bus service by eliminating eliminating duplicate lines. Uh, but they, we would um just make sure that Womata, like if you're gonna run, if you're gonna ask people to transfer the service needs to continue to be high frequency, not, you know, we started with five minute frequencies and then we dropped to fifteen or twenty. Um, you know, and folks remember during COVID when service dropped significantly, all of a sudden, if you're taking a, you know, two rail line trip and you had a twenty minute wait for each, you'd be waiting up to an hour for something that used to take like twenty minutes. Uh, and then right now, you know, bus and rail, um, uh, Womata, I don't, or that, okay, sorry. Womata eliminated a fare if a rider um uh was transferring from bus and rail, um, eliminating double charge fares if a rider had to transfer completed trip. Um, the uh, this was really critical because uh riders have to um take bus to rail and right now that you have to, you did, you used to have to pay a transfer, now you don't. So if they bring that back, um, we wanted to make sure that they don't have to, uh, you don't have to pay to uh transfer um anymore. Because if you're low income, you're basically paying a double penalty. You can't afford to live next to the rail station and you have to transfer the bus station. So um, so the feedback, um, the this feedback is due June seventh to sixteenth. Um, so we'll um, we'll uh wanna get like feedback on this. Uh, and these are, again, this is all the points that I made, um, and if folks agreed on the work session. Uh, there'll be a opportunified feedback on phase three. So Womata is gonna take all this input and come back with a um a revised um uh network for the region. So they're gonna take that first gigantic, you know, here's thirty five percent more service. They'll come back to the city and um I'm sorry, they come back to the region and say, this is what we're proposing in phase three, based on all the input uh from cities like ours. Um, and again, the last point I made here, there's uh expanding service is really important. Um, you know, but it's contingent on expansion of funding in Womata. Uh, you know, and that means Maryland stepping up, DC's, well, DC and Virginia, we can't do a lot about directly, but Maryland we can. Uh, and we're looking, you know, forward to advocating for that at Prince George's County and at the state that they need to put the resources in to improve this this access for our um our city. So uh, that is it.
All right, perfect. Uh, thank you, Jared. So um I will be sharing this letter. Um, obviously we shared it up with a county council member and the rest of the council for um the county councils, that way they know where we stand. Um, but also like, you know, I'm gonna reach out to a few of our neighboring cities to see if they're putting letters of support. So that way they could flag things that we're supporting and maybe ideally as a support. Right? So I have a conversation with them as well. So council, if you guys are agreement with this point, let us know and um we'll try to get this letter out this week. Okay, so we're good? Thumbs up and then we'll move on to the next item. Good, good, good. All right, perfect. So Jared, um, will we touch it, put it like, you know, in letterhead? Um, and CC a bunch of people and send it out. Okay? So we'll work on that. All right, cool. Um, all right, moving on to the next item, discussion and vote on legislative meeting calendar for FY twenty four. So Melissa, can you put the calendar in front, please? As it is the norm, we meet the first and third Tuesday of every month. The start is September because we do take recess. On July, August, and I'll say this, we will be taking recess in July. I guess you're on your own. I will see you till September. See you later. Um. So I will say the following thing, you have the fiscal year was presented last year. This is the edit. Usually if it's like an important day, we go ahead and uh change it like, let's say for whatever reason, like it falls on a holiday, right? We go ahead and change it to something else. So that's part of the things that uh we have done before, like if it's election day, uh, it's a holiday for some people, right? We have changed our date because the reality is like we're focused on the elections being run instead of the meeting itself. And it's very hard as people are running to go vote to try to also focus on us having a meeting. And um, for the most part, the whole entire city is is working on that. Um, not just in our elections, it had land in our elections, but also like when it comes to bigger elections, right? It's a way of like encouraging people to vote. So if you've had the calendar for more than two weeks, it is there in front of you, right? So this is the first and the third, every Tuesday is there. Um, take a look at it. We're gonna vote and approve it. But if there was a problem, you guys should already like let us know. So that way there is no problem. So that way they go ahead and add this to the calendar and that way the residents know when we will meet. And you guys, you know, they usually send us a link for that was, it's also in our in our um work calendar as well. So you have from September to June eighteen. And to point out, this is not taken into account the budget meetings that we add aside from there. That is just our legislative work session or any special meeting that might happen in the middle. Okay? So I know you, I see Jared, your mic is open. Um, go ahead. Is there anything you already flagged or how are we feeling so far?
Oh, uh, no, I'm sorry. I left my mic open by accident. Sorry.
I thought you were eager to say like, yes, we love this calendar. Thank you, Melissa, because she has not heard. As as far as I concerned, there was only one feedback that was heard. Um, actually two feedbacks on the same item. And then that has been no other feedback. All right. And this usually works if you guys give it to her ahead of time so she can make the adjustments. All right, Danielle, what, go ahead.
Um, no adjustments needed. I just needed to be, um, we might wanna mark that October seventeenth is the also the last day of the fall MML conference here in um in our area up in College Park. So just just to note that, I'm sure that it won't affect, but um it might affect anybody who may have been there all day, but um just making note of that.
So we'll cross that river when we get to it. I know for the fall conference, like not many of us goes, usually like a very small team because it's like, it's a, it's a very small group together. So it should be fine. Um, in the past, we've had it. So we'll leave it there. And if I feel like there's no way like I could um, I could deal with it, then we'll move it, okay? Because that mainly will like heavily affect me if anybody, uh, but it's, I'm glad that it's in College Park, which is a change from um the Cambridge area. Um, and that usually have meant that, you know, I have to stay extra time. So we'll flag that one out. Um, and I'll let you guys know, stick us closer in case like if I see that it can, it's not doable, then it's not doable. But the reality, the rest of the team should be fine, but I'll flag it. Um, we'll flag it out. And and if I say, you know what, like, um, it might not be doable for me, we have to change it, then we'll change it. Okay? But if that might be a small one. All right, cool. Anything else? Luke, you're good? And Melissa, you took into account spring break, right? Yes? Mel, Melly? No, I think. Okay, so double check that not no meeting falls under spring break because um we um, we usually try to respect as much as we can, but we'll flag it. So right now, this is what it looks like. If you guys see any changes, let us know before September. Okay, I'm not gonna lie, die on the cross when it comes to this calendar, making minor changes if need be. All right, good. All right. So there's a calendar. You guys have seen it. It's been seen in public. I will say, um, cool. Let's take care of that. Okay? All right. Can you put that agenda back on, Melissa? All right. So I moved to approve the 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 legislative and work session calendar for the mayor and council. Uh, noting that there might be two flies, so we might have to change later up to this point. And if we need to readjust for the budget, then we do it as well. All right. There's been a motion on the floor. Can you guys second it?
Second.
Okay, probably move the second any discussion? Hearing none, we move on to the next item. And this should be easy. Discussion and vote on council recess for July and August is basically means that we will not meet the first and the third Tuesday. Doesn't mean that we cannot hold emergency meetings or a meeting specifically to something. It just means that um the staff gets to work on our priorities and the things that they need to do. They also take some time because during our very heavy September to June, it's um, it's very hard for them to take a a quick break and reset. All right. So I'm putting a motion on the floor to um have council recess for July, August, twenty twenty three. A second?
Second. They're not.
Let's probably move in second. They're putting you through the work.
I know, second, I'm second.
All right. So as we probably moved and second, any discussion, hearing none? Um, any objections, abstentions? None. This move, uh, this item has moved also unanimously for zero zero. All right. Moving on to the next item, which is Melissa's favorite, favorite of all time. She like, you know, throws party on behalf of this special moment every single day she sees it. This is like, no, I don't. Um, it is the vote on the approval of the minutes. This minutes have been submitted in previous meetings. So you've had at least minimum. previous meetings, so you've had at least minimum two weeks to review this minutes. Um, so this is not last minute being thrown for you to figure out if there's any changes. So this is April eleven, the budget meeting, April eighteen, the work session, budget and public hearing, budget work session. April twenty-fifth, budget legislative meeting, April second legislative meeting, May A, special legislative meeting and swearing in ceremony. Is there, um, so I'm putting a motion to approve all the minutes uh that I just read. Is there a second?
Second.
Is it probably moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Um, I, you know, um, yay, nay? Okay, I see no objection or abstention. Uh, the minutes have been approved as presented. Thank you, Melly, for making sure that this happened. I know she has a bunch of minutes. She's gonna give us for the work session and um we get to review them um over the summer and um that's gonna be the homework assignment Melissa will give us uh while we're, while we're quote unquote legislative break. Alright? So um I would not hold you guys anymore. It's ten oh seven. Um, and um can I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is it probably moving second, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, we have um adjourned at ten oh seven PM. Please be aware that the next work session, we are gonna have a hearing to discuss the the budget that amendment that just got passed and is required for us to do. Followed by work session. Um, and at this point, unless there's something that is dire to um be voted on, which I don't think so because I think we care, too careful business, they potentially could be on it, but we're trying to make sure that not, next meeting, it is um catch all the more less and be done. But it should be a hearing, uh, moving into a work session. So I'm gonna ask you guys this publicly. Please make sure that we are having a legislative discussion because I have a lot of work to do. Um, and the many conversations I'm already having as we move forward. If something needs to change, because right now our, our legislative priority has been funding Potts Hall. Right? Aside from obviously, you know, making sure we got funding for SS four A and making sure we got funding for the gateway um art and whatever. And if we could marry two of them together, then fine. But that's been at least of our three top us, and that is specific order. Okay? So if something's changed, let me know. If not, that is the, that is the marching orders I've been had for a while, and that's basically what I'm putting forward as well. Okay? And it's two different states. One of them is at the federal level, so it doesn't necessarily interfere with what we're asking the state um and other pockets of money. Alright? So get to work and get some homework done. Alright, have a good night uh to all of our staff. Thank you guys so much to the whole entire lovely uh Marania Day. Um um, you know, committee. Thank you guys so much. Uh, we did meet today. I will be sharing with you guys uh the feedback because we are not having a five K or anything on Marania Day, period, the end. Uh, that was a consensus from the everybody else. We could have it any other day except for that day. Alright, because it created a lot of safety hazard that the staff put herself in like very dangerous situation where they had it to avoid cars from being hit and so on and so on. So we're doing, uh, we're moving it to somewhere else. That is definitely a direct decision. And Kamali could give you more of a feedback on it, but at this point, it's like the five K will have to be moved to a different day and not Marania Day. Because we do not have the capacity to be able to do two things at the same time in the magnitude that we have to, uh, having both staff members being here at seven o'clock. All the PD was at the five K. So basically, everybody had it to do uh safety, um, as we're trying to close Rhode Island. So that was a lot. And I'll tell you this, the feedback that I got from the staff was very strong, so you guys will get it. But we love the five K, just in a different day, not that day. And we are gonna make sure that we are gonna, so as a feedback, since you guys are here, Melly and I are gonna be working on our two-year calendar along with the rest of the team, as long, as well as coordinating like the committees. Uh, we do this every two years, so that's gonna be addressed and we're working with everybody else to address that, but we will go ahead and move it. Uh, we're not having an event before Marania Day. That's uh been crossed out because I'm not gonna put myself and, and the staff in danger. Um, that's gonna be a no. Okay? Alright, thank you guys so much. Have a great night and I will see you guys soon. Remember the seventeen, we have pride. Um, um, have fun from nine thirty. I will see you there and enjoy the various activities that our city and various cities are having. Alright? See you guys later. Enjoy the peace parade is gonna pass by on Friday. Alright, thank you guys. Bye.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.